Everyone, thank you for joining us as we take a moment on this beautiful April the 4th. Well, maybe a little bit brisk, maybe it's kite flying season for the Charlotte City Council's Strategy Session. Our Strategy Session is actually designed to have council members communicate the work that was under development, in development, or things that are coming through as a completion prior to the vote that we have officially with on our regular business agenda meetings. So, we're glad to have the public follow us. Again, this meeting is being held with the appropriate notice for the virtual folks that are attending. And then, we also have people that are joining us inside of the government center. I'd just like to say again, welcome to this meeting. And I'm going to ask if we can start our introductions with the city clerk, and then, we'll go forward to those that are attending virtually.
Stephanie Kelly, city clerk.
Good evening, Matt Newton, District 5.
Braxton Winston, at large.
Greg Phillips, at large.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening, Julie Isel, at large, and Mayor Protem.
Good evening, I'm Vi Lyles, and I serve as mayor.
Marcus Jones, city manager.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Watlington, you are District 3 representative.
Good evening, Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Lena James, deputy city attorney.
And now, we'll go to those that are attending the meeting virtually, the council members attending virtually. And we'll start with District 1.
Happy Monday, Larkin Eggleston, District 1.
Tark Bakari, District 6.
Go Heels, Ed Driggs, District 7.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Driggs. And our city attorney?
Patrick Baker, city attorney.
Okay. So, I think that we are now prepared to begin the Strategy Session. Our agenda tonight includes the most important information around the council committee works. This is where the committees have been working over the last, during the last month, and they have the opportunity to report not what they've been working on, but to actually inquire about the work that they need to have assistance in gaining more information or more knowledge. So, it's, if the committee reports are available, you can watch the meetings online, you can also see the minutes of those meetings are posted as well. But, in this opportunity, it's a dialogue to ask questions as the committee has done the work to pose those questions for the members that are not attending that particular committee meeting. And I thought we would start with transportation and planning, and then be followed that with Safe Communities. So, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Transportation and Planning Committee met on May 14th, and we had several important updates. The first one was on the Strategic Mobility Plan, which is, as you all know, it's a document that's meant to update our transportation policies and deliver a mobility network for all modes of travel. And definitely, it's a priority with regards to our investment strategy for our transportation network. The plan will align with CAT's 2030 Transit Plan and ongoing recommendations being developed through the Envision My Ride Bus Plan. And staff is going to come back to us in May with a draft strategic mobility plan for the committee and full council. We talked about the policy map, and the committee received an update on the policy map. This was approved last week, as you all know, and it goes into effect on July 1st. And the map will be used as adopted land use policy for decisions and capital investments. And future planning initiatives are to monitor and track the progress of the map and make changes as appropriate. Starting in the fall of 2022, city staff will begin the community area planning process. That's what, as we met, talked about last week, follows the adoption of the map. And this process is intended to look more granularly at the 15 different areas and how we implement the comprehensive plan vision, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. And that's really when residents will have the opportunity to dig in to details on their neighborhood. And again, that's broken into 15 different area plans. And then, we had an update on the Unified Development Ordinance. The work is ongoing, and we, as is the economic impact analysis of the UDO. We've had multiple interactive workshops that have been held with the development community addressing a wide range of issues, ranging from economic and design issues, to see where perhaps there's some conflicts still, you know, unintended consequences, that kind of thing. And we've also have, the economic impact analysis identifies potential refinements that need to still go into the draft UDO based on the detailed financial and physical impact. Through this process, staff has been working with the development community and the community at large to identify potential issues. And this will come back to the committee in April with final recommendations.
Any questions for the council? Are there any questions for the council as you're continuing to do this work?
Madam Mayor, it's Ed Driggs.
Yes, Mr. Driggs?
I just wanted to emphasize, in addition to the report for the Mayor Protem, that we are very actively discussing the process through which the phases will be implemented. The adoption of the map has occurred, the UDO is coming, and we are working with the staff on the steps that will be taken to address issues that may still be outstanding. Some concerns have been raised by members of the public about this, and I thought it was worth stressing in this meeting as well, that we do intend to be responsive to issues that come to light related to the map, and to make sure that our transition to the full implementation of the UDO is orderly. Just wanted to stress that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to recognize council member Ashmira has joined us now. All right, are there other comments or questions from the council? All right, hearing none. Thank you for the rap report from our Transportation and Planning Committee. Now, we'll go to our Safe Communities Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just by virtue of the way that the calendar was in the month of March, we actually have not had a meeting since the last Strategy Session update. The meeting happened to be the 1st of March, and we had our Strategy Session six days later. So, no updates from a meeting since then, but I did want to give folks a preview of what we'll be discussing in our upcoming meetings. And please note that our April meeting has been shifted to a different day than it would normally fall on. That will be on April 13th now. We will be talking about CNPD's gun safety efforts, which has been a topic of conversation at a couple of the most recent committee meetings, managing high nuisance properties, which we've frequently discussed as a council. Every council member knows of a couple of addresses in their district or in the city that just sort of seem to constantly be the source of headaches for the community. So, we're trying to create a strategy around how to deal with some of those frequent flyers, if you will. Amendments to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Policy. We do intend for the committee to vote on those recommendations to send to the full council for consideration in possibly May or June. And then, we are also anticipating that based on the outcomes of our discussion tonight around some of the city codes that were removed from the group that we passed last week, that we might be considering or discussing some of those, again, pending the outcome of tonight's conversation. And looking forward a little further to May, putting a bow on some of those things I just mentioned if we've not already, but also continuing to work on the safer streets for all users effort. So, that is what we've got on the docket in front of us. Might have more after tonight's meeting, but welcome any or all of you to join us on April 18th for our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eggleston. Are there questions for the committee around Safe Communities? All right. Look forward to next month's report because it seems like you've got a lot on your plate for that meeting, Mr. Eggleston.
Yes, Madam.
All right, our next committee is Intergovernmental Relations. I see Mr. Bakari was on virtually, and Mr. Winston is in the building with us. Mr. Winston, I'm going to recognize you, and or you guys, or whomever is going to go first. Who's going to go first?
I guess I will. So, the last Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting, we had our federal, our federal updates and our state updates that we get every year, I mean, excuse me, every, every meeting. You can see the updates that are in our packet right here. I will say also, in this past month, I've mentioned in a couple of different meetings, but Mayor Protem, council member Eggleston and I were able to travel up to Washington DC last month, where we did carry our federal legislative agenda. I thought they were received very well. I was able to attend meetings myself with Congresswoman Adams, and Senator Tillis, and Senator Burr's staff. Mr. Eggleston and Ms. Isel were able to meet with Mr. Bishop's office. So, I guess they can say whether or not it went the same. But, again, everything was, was received very, very well. And there's a lot happening up in DC that we'll keep eye on as we continue to make strides on our policies down here. We also did get a chance to talk about this functional consolidation, or consolidated approach, as you will. And we re-reviewed the charge that the entire council gave us in committee. We were able to talk about it. The, the co-chairs were encouraged by committee members to have informal conversations with County, County Commission. And I would like to report that I've had some of those conversations, and they have gone rather well. We were able to talk to Commissioner Dunlap, Chairman Dunlap, and we were able to kind of get everybody on the same, same plane, same level as what, what this was and what this wasn't. Was also able to have a conversation with the Intergovernmental, Intergovernmental Relations Committee Chair, Mark Jarrell, as recently as this afternoon. And we were both encouraged, excuse me, encouraged about where we, where we are. And he is going to invite us to the May Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting, so we can talk about things. I will say, he did ask for communications from us, from our committee, kind of laying a few things out. I will get with the co-chair and staff, and we'll work on that, and we'll clear that with, with the committee members. Would like that, to get that to Commissioner Jarrell by early next week. I would just add, also, in conversations in Raleigh last week, I got some indication that the IIJA, that's the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the next large federal spending bill on infrastructure. While that obviously was passed at the end of last year, there's a large dollar amount of money right now that the federal government is working on establishing more detailed protocols. So, just a heads up to staff and the manager, I think that's one that we should definitely be proactive in identifying opportunities. And I can have some more conversations with you guys offline, but clearly, that's the next, the next big thing coming, and those who are most proactive benefit the greatest.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions for the Intergovernmental Committee? Comments? Inquiry? All right. Thank you very much for the work. Look forward to the continued work around those two topics. Next, next committee is Great Neighborhoods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great Neighborhoods met this month, this past month, and talked about two things. The first being our home ownership programs. We've talked for a while as a council about needing to upgrade those to match the market. And so, we reviewed some of the opportunities to do so in our meeting, which included things like updating the city's down payment assistance programs, by increasing the funding and per unit maximums, expanding the use of the Acquisition Rehab and Resale Program through a revolving loan fund, and expanding resources for new home construction. There are a few other tools that we discussed that we are looking for an update back from staff after investigation in regards to restrictive covenants on home ownership projects to make sure that we can protect for affordability. First, right of refusal for the city to be able to buy back previous investments, and shared equity models to create new funding sources. Staff will refine the strategies and then bring them back to us. One of the things that we mentioned as well is, in addition to updating the tools, also making sure that we've got a robust marketing campaign that we can reach would-be buyers as well as would-be sellers, so that people know and can take advantage of the opportunities. The second topic we covered was our Source of Income Discrimination Recommendations from the Ad Hoc Committee, and we did vote unanimously to move those recommendations forward to the full council. So, we'll be discussing those soon as a full council, hopefully, to adopt. So, those were the main two items from this month from the Great Neighborhoods Committee.
All right. Questions regarding those two items that are moving forward through the committee process? Ms. Johnson?
I have a question regarding the Source of Income Discrimination. And I don't know if there's anyone from the city to talk about it. There is? Okay. I sent some questions about the, the application or the implementation of the policy. Should it be adopted? Sean coming forward?
Hi, Sean.
Hi, how are you? Sorry, Ms. Johnson, could you repeat your question?
Well, I had sent some questions to, to Ms. Harris earlier. I had asked if we had the number, well, the recommendation says that, that this discrimination of this policy would be applicable after the policy is developed. I wanted to know how long the policy would, would take before it was developed. And then, I also asked for the number of pending TIGs that we have, and how many residential units are included in those TIGs, because here's my concern. If the policy takes three months to develop, and in the next three months or the past four months, we've awarded TIGs, and we're missing opportunities to implement this policy. So, I just wanted a timeframe around those two questions.
Thank you. And I can answer the first question. We also have Todd DeLong here from the Economic Development Department to provide some context on where we're at with TIGs. You know, we're going through a multi-step process on Source of Income. Last year, the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee was formed about a year ago, releasing their recommendations in December. Great Neighborhoods discussed the recommendations. The two co-chairs from the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee came to committee on February 28th. And then, on March 28th, staff led the discussion around what would the next steps be associated with adopting a policy where Source of Income protection is adopted for all city-supported housing above and beyond the Housing Trust Fund, where that protection already exists today. So, that would extend it into city-owned land, any support provided for rental housing through CDBG, Home Dollars, and TIGs. So, next up in the process, over the next few weeks, we'll be working with the advisory committee, one last check-in with them as it relates specifically to, for example, enforcement mechanisms associated with the policy. So, when we come to full council, and we'll be ready to come back to full council in the early May timeframe, subject to availability, we will walk in with the full proposed policy for your discussion, and we'll be prepared to move as fast as you want to move.
Okay. And then, okay, and you also have the information about the, the number, the pending number of TIGs, or the pending number, city-supported?
Yes, if I can invite Mr. DeLong to provide some perspective on that.
Okay.
Todd DeLong, Economic Development. Thank you for the question. With respect to the question about the tax increment grants, there may have been a misunderstanding by us this morning because I thought the question was actually what TIGs have been approved by council in the last four months, which we've had one approved, which included 350 residential units.
I can't hear you that well, I'm sorry.
We've had one tax increment grant approved in the last four months that have included residential units. That's
That did not include any?
It did include residential units, 350 units. And that was the Pearl Innovation District. And then, when it comes to pending, we have, it's hard to say the number off the top of my head, maybe two or three. But, I'll say that there are no policy that would actually preclude us from actually including some of this language into our agreements as we negotiate them today. There's one agreement right now, I think, that we're working on to actually include some language that would be similar to what you're looking at from a policy perspective, and how we can incorporate that into the agreement. So, the way our policy is currently set up is we do have the flexibility to incorporate some of the council goals without actually having a policy requiring it. And that's one of the things we enjoy about the flexibility of our existing policies.
So, there's 350 units in the Pearl. Do you have numbers for the other one?
No, not off the top of my head. The other one that I'm thinking of right now, I think there might be 90, 84 units total.
Perhaps you could get that to us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and presented.
Send it to you tomorrow. Yeah, and also present it when the, the meeting, maybe when it's presented, so the public can see this information as well. These are public dollars. Also, I want to make sure that the list that we're talking about is inclusive of all city dollars. I know there's certain things that are named, like TIGs and the Home Dollars, and, you know, there, there, there's some specificity there. And I want to know if that language And I want to know if that language, if we need to be so specific in case in the future there would be something, some other program that had a different name. Or I don't know if CIPs ever have residuals attached to the, but the goal of this policy from the council perspective is that any public dollar received by a developer, that that developer is not able to discriminate. So I don't know if we have to be so specific with the name or if we could just say, you know, any public dollar is included.
Yes, staff certainly understands and agrees with that point on intent. And the references that we made on March 28th were just to try and illustrate what would be different going forward since we know this protection related to housing choice vouchers is already included in the Housing Trust Fund. We just wanted to shine a light on what are the other types of funding sources where we're potentially relying on to bring more affordable units into the marketplace.
I understand. I just want to make sure that we're inclusive for future language. And then lastly, I just wanted to clarify what you said, Todd. You said that there would be room to negotiate the TIG outside of the policy. So it's possible, or we have the ability, should this be passed, that current TIGs or pending TIGs would also fall under this policy, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that we have the ability to negotiate outside a policy. I think everything that we're negotiating was within policy, but we had the flexibility within that policy to negotiate different things to help achieve council and community goals.
Okay. So does that mean if the policy's passed in, I don't know, June or July, that pending TIG today, those 350 units or we know of at least maybe 450 units, 440 units, that are currently, I think, pending TIGs, that it could be, it could fall under this new policy?
The tax increment grants that have not been approved by city council yet may be able to incorporate some of that. A lot of these just depend upon the projects themselves and whether or not they actually afford the opportunity to negotiate some of these elements into it. Because as we're doing these, we're not directly supporting residential development through these incentives. We're already getting a public benefit, whether it's through infrastructure or something else. So it's, we want to make sure we're still able to achieve that public benefit through this partnership while also maximizing the types of community benefits that we can achieve through these agreements.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Watlington?
No, I just wanted to say, as I'm thinking about what Todd just shared, I think it's important that we, yes, we have to prioritize community benefits, but I want to be very careful that we don't start to say, well, this is, we'll sacrifice this one for the sake of these other pieces. It feels like to me there are some things that we don't take quite as seriously as the rest when it comes to economic development. And I would hope that our policy reflects that and our behavior even more so reflects that. I don't want it to be something in which we look at 17 projects and none of them have affordable housing because we say, well, we already got benefit because we got a street.
I think that's a fair question. I think that as these projects come up and are discussed, it's going to probably be a lot more uniqueness to each one of them. And council will have to make a decision on which of those would be most important for the development and the TIG and the legislation that we have that allows us to do it. So I think that's a great point. I don't think we have any further questions for the Great Neighborhoods, so we'll go to the Triple E Committee. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Triple E Committee, the Environment Equity and Engagement Committee, had three items that discussed at our last committee meeting. Number one is the Strategic Energy Action Plan Report. It's the same presentation which was received at our last week's strategy session. Also, staff focused on progress towards our 2030 zero-carbon building goals, and there is about 18% gap that City of Charlotte will work to close that gap to meet our 2030 goals. Also, the committee discussed equity and how equity is embedded in our actions and goals. And last, but not the least, committee emphasized that we need community support to meet our community-wide 2050 goal of going carbon-free. So that's where we continue to need support from neighborhoods, private sector, nonprofits, and other agencies to help us lower our carbon emissions. So that's the CEAP report. A second item that committee had discussed was the Americans with Disabilities Act Program Update, the ADA Update. So committee had received an update on the program and the transition plan. Also, staff had shared that the city has an online portal that's open for feedback. And last, the committee emphasized that the ASL interpreters, American Sign Language interpreters, should be available at council meetings. And we have asked staff to look into that as our budget discussion continues because I think that is very important. And many of my colleagues on the committee feel very strongly that if we want to truly build equity, we should be intentional about how folks with disabilities are able to access our council meetings. So I hope that Mr. Jones bring up our budget proposal that will have our ASL interpreters' availability at our council meetings. And third item on our agenda was Equity in Governance Framework. As I had mentioned at our last committee update, it's a huge undertaking. Our staff support, Frederico Rios, had shared an update and a draft Equity in Governance Framework and how we are going to go about the engagement equity tool for committee feedback. And committee had provided feedback on this draft on how we use equity lens to address our council priorities and strategic approaches. So it's very important that as we move forward that we are using data, we are using partnerships and engagement to create equitable communities. So the next steps for the committee is to finalize a draft framework and bring it to you all at our next strategy session in May for additional discussions and feedback. But really, those are the three things that committee is tackling. Any questions?
Ms. Ashmira, let's see if there are questions from the council. Any questions on this? I would really appreciate an opportunity to review the draft framework, and I know that you are going to send it out. When you do that, could you include the comparable communities that you have or some of the best practices that you've seen in other communities like ours, you know, with the same kind of, you know, opportunity for black and brown and white folks to be considered, people that, the ability to have our equity lens mirror the demographics that we have or the data that we have for the city? Just some examples of that if you have, if the staff has done some research around that, that would help us compare the conversation of that framework with others. I believe that would be very helpful. Mr.?
Yes, we did, Mr. Rios had provided a couple of examples, and I can ask Mr. Rios to send you all a copy of our last committee meeting's presentation. But our goal is to provide really more comprehensive update to you all at our May's strategy session. So we are providing our comprehensive feedback as well as some of the examples from other cities and what they are doing to tackle equity. But we looked at Long Beach, we looked at a city in Kansas, we looked at, one more city, Mr. Winston and Ms. Johnson, help me out here. What other city did we look at? I remember Long Beach pretty well because they were doing something very unique with their equity tool. But other cities that you can, do you remember?
I forgot the specific city.
Okay.
No, we'll just get that. I just think it would be helpful. I want to look and see how much we cover. And I think that Mr. Winston wanted to be recognized. Mr. Winston?
Yes, so to that end, I would just ask, I don't know if Mr. Rios is available. Mayor, we did give some feedback as to some of the holes that we saw and some of the good things, of course. But from what we heard from ourselves and from our colleagues, there was, there were things that needed, that staff needed to go back and look at. So I would, I would, I would just, I don't know where they're at in that process. Obviously, we can get the minutes and whatever presentation was given, but I would just, I would just say that staff is continuing to sharpen their pencil today and it was nowhere, wasn't near the final draft.
Well, I think that this is good work and congratulate all of you for putting the time and effort into it. And so we'll hear back from you in May. I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, and I just want to add that we did hear from the city, the manager, Terry, I can't think of his last name right now, over the ASL and the ADA department.
Mr. Bradley.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes. And so we've heard from the hearing impaired community. So I just want to let the stat, my colleagues know that closed caption is not the language of those who use ASL to communicate. And we are excluding members of the public by not having an ASL interpreter at every meeting. So I hope that we can support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Ashmira?
No, that's it. And thank you for that charge and thank you for that vision, Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to Economic Development. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone. The Economic Development Committee met last month, and the members are Vice Chairman Dreggs, Ashmira Phillips, and Wallington. And we had a very good conversation about a topic that I'm very near and dear to me, which is the quarters of opportunity. I teased it last month when we, when we had a similar meeting discussing committee updates. And as you know, the quarters of opportunity is about how we preserve, protect, strengthen, and build legacy in six quarters throughout the City of Charlotte. Those quarters being Betis Fort Road and Rosaliri, Sugar Creek and I-85, Graham Street and North Tryon, Central and Albemarle, West Boulevard, and Freedom Drive, Wilkerson. And we've been doing a lot of work over the last year and a half on all of these quarters, particularly Betis Fort Road and Council Members Wallington's districts specifically. But of course, the goal is to outreach to all of them as well. It should be noted while this lands in the Economic Development Committee, it's cross-sectional. A number of other committees and other city departments are playing in this space as well. Part of the goal is to make sure that all these quarters are safe, that there's areas for place-making, affordable housing, mobility option, food access, community development support, infrastructure, supporting of small business, and public-private partnerships. It should be noted that not only has the city seen a value in protecting these quarters, so have our corporate community as well as major foundations have already also invested in putting their money where their mouth is in terms of the need to further strengthen and grow and develop these quarters throughout the city. Currently, there's over $218 million of private dollars for place-making, violence interruption. Obviously, these include the mayor's racial equity program and another $20 million from Wells Fargo. So there are a number of eyes on our quarters, rightly so, in terms of how we move forward. As I said before, the staff did a great job in terms of level-setting for the committee. Again, we have new committee members in terms of laying out specifically what we're doing in each and every quarter. Every quarter is uniquely different. Betis Fort Road certainly has gotten a lot of attention as well as Mrs. Wallington's district because we were kind of first out of the dugout, for the lack of an analogy in terms of kind of being ready to move forward. Ms. Wallington has her playbook. Certainly, there were a number of other initiatives on the ground on Betis Fort Road. Our goal and objective moving forward is really to begin to go and do more work in District Four with Council Member Johnson, certainly in District Five with Council Member Newton, and again, all of the quarters. Again, some are further along than others, some are on first base, some is on third base. But the goal and objective is to be intentional about what we're doing, understanding and knowing that each quarter is uniquely different. Each quarter is a different stage of life in terms of its development, but all are equally important. It should be also noted that we have a new loan executive from the Quarters of Opportunity from Bank of America. His name escapes me. I'm sorry, but he is working with us and I will be touring with him all of the quarters, starting with District Two because District Two represented. So we'll start.
I think Ms. Watlington might have to get out a week ahead of you somewhere.
She can get in the car. Amber Nae can get in the car. They all can get in the car with us.
I see a van in this future.
Well, you just took it. What we want to do is, you're reading my mind. What we really want to do is because I believe in the concept of feeling, seeing, and touching and now that COVID is painfully going down, to really get anybody in and take the committee on a road trip so that we all can experience and see what's happening on our quarters and talk to some of the small business owners and talk to, see where the land needs to be purchased in some cases, and talk to the police officers on the ground and talk to a lot of the stakeholders and neighborhoods and communities on these quarters and really get a feel for what we're investing in so that when we come to the council and talk specifically about Project A, B, or C, there's a knowledge around the table based on what we have read in our briefing material, but also based on that site visit that we can really be, we can react to. So hopefully, we will be announcing relatively soon, sometime in the summer, where we can really kind of get from the, from behind the desk into the community and really begin to kind of walk these quarters and touch them and feel them in a way that will make a difference. So I'm really excited about that. Also, very excited about the partnership that we have with the private community. Obviously, all our dollars have to be used for a public purpose. And for the last year and a half, I think the manager probably lost most of us here because of me, because we really, really, really stretch how we use public dollars. And the importance of what the mayor has done for us by going out and working with the private community is that we can use those private dollars where our public dollars stop. And that's really, really important because some of these scenarios that we're dealing with need some private help. And so it is really encouraging that the private dollars are there. It's really encouraging that major foundations in the community is supporting these quarters. And again, it's a lot of work, a lot of thinking out of the box and doing things differently than we've done before. But I am convinced that if we can revitalize the quarters, we can revitalize the communities that surround them. And so I'm really excited about it. That was basically the bulk of the meeting, at the last meeting, very good questions from the vice chairman and members of the committee in terms of how do we approach these quarters and certainly looking forward to working not only with Tracy Dotson, who chairs, who's our staff liaison to our committee, but also working with Council Member Wallington and Sean in the Affordable Housing Committee because we kind of all kind of work together, right? Even transportation and infrastructure because all those things touch the quarters. And while it rests in our committee, we certainly will be outreach to various other committees and their chairmanship and their staff liaison for support and encouragement and, I guess in some cases, funding, right? Where, you know, so the manager will take care of all that for us. But that's the extent of our report. The one thing that I'll be remiss if I didn't say is that there was a need from the committee and it's clarification about the governance structure in terms of how the private money is going to be utilized, right? And I think people just want to kind of know who, what, when, where, and why, and to what extent that those dollars can be used in the governance structure and making sure that there is not only accountability for how the public dollars are being spent, but also, I believe, the private dollars need to have some type of public. to be have some type of public accountability as well. Thank you.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Graham. On the private sector part, I think that they ought to have the same kind of reporting on a regular basis to the community, because I believe that all of us will do good. I think that this is why we should promote ourselves more often about the work that we do. This is a, a community that steps up to solve a lot of big issues, and, and, and I think we should talk about that even more. I know that there are ways that everybody has to communicate, but I, I challenge us to figure out a way, maybe it's an annual report from the city, or maybe it's some document that we can use online, or some ribbon or dashboard, whatever it is, I think it's important. And I see that Mr. Eggleston has some questions for the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Eggleston, question or comment? I should have said you have, want to be recognized to speak.
Yeah, not a question for the chair, but this feels most appropriate to, to bring up in economic development as we're discussing it, so this is really for the manager, and will not come as a surprise to him, because we've had this conversation a couple of times, and I've had with other councilmembers a couple of times, but I think as far as economic development is, it relates to supporting our local small businesses here in the city, the state government has given us a tool, gave us a tool last year that we've still not utilized, and I've been pushing the manager to bring forward to us a strategy around how we can implement a pilot in one or two parts of our city as it relates to social districts, and so I'd ask him if he has an update on that, or when we can expect to see it, because I think that is a way, particularly as we move into the warmer months of the year, that we can help breathe some additional life back into our hospitality industry in particular, but really, small businesses across the board in some of our more walkable neighborhoods, and also encourage people to move around on foot and on bikes and on scooters and things like that, get out of their cars, so I'm, I'm hoping that he can bring forward something to us soon, and I'd like to see us implementing a pilot as we head into spring and head out of COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Eggleston. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Eggleston, so I will say the name again, Charlotte Lamb, she is on loan to the manager's office, and she has been working on gathering data that's related to the social districts, so I, I think we have a very good start, and I would be able to get something back to the council this month about the possibilities of social districts.
Just one, one more comment, Madam Mayor, if I can.
Please.
Which is, looking at Matt, and it brought it back to my memory, a lot of conversation at the committee meeting about Albemarle and Central Avenue, in light of the last couple of weeks where the individuals who had the, the shops that were displaced, about how we can be a lot more intentional in terms of beginning to work over there, obviously with Eastland coming online, with the soccer and the development there, obviously, there's the skate park, I mean, safety issues, tenant issues, all those we believe can be addressed through the quarters of opportunity, given time and space, and I believe of all the quarters, that quarter is uniquely Charlotte, right, because it's international, it's, it's, it's what I like about Charlotte, because it's not all brand new, right, I, I think some of the old stuff is really good stuff, and the different cultures and the different opportunities, so we saw a lot of opportunities for work on that quarter, but a lot of the work is being done because there's individuals coming, as you have been advocating for District Five in that quarter, but also community groups and organizations, so tell them to call and write and suggest how we can be supportive, and certainly, we look forward to working with you in the short term, and then, and then in the long term, whoever succeeds you with those big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Eggleston, May, the manager hopes to have something on the social districts.
I might have misheard him, I thought he said something this month.
Oh, did you say this month? April, that's, okay, better, even better, April, and, Mr. Graham, I, I agree with you, I've always wanted to see international way banners along Central and Albemarle, it's just one of those things that, it's, it's when you visit other communities and see where they, they actually own, I mean, San Francisco Chinatown, it was just very clear, I mean, the banners were up, the, the, the people were sitting on their stoops, and it's just, and it, it just seems that there's a part of Charlotte that can benefit from just even a small investment in some of those kinds of opportunities to brand yourself and, and how it works, and hopefully, one day, somebody will actually listen, and maybe I'll actually figure out a way to get it done, but I also agree that the cultural diversity in that community needs to be celebrated more than anything else, so.
And they got pink robots delivering coffee and daddieships, right?
Hey, you know, that's true.
District Three and South Boulevard might want to have a word about that international way.
Well, we can, it doesn't mean that we can only have one, I mean, there are lots of communities of ethnicity and cultural diversity around, so I'm not limited to what we need to do, but I, I do think there is an opportunity to do something, and, and we, we talk about it, and we want to get the big, I mean, Eastland, and, and you talk about all the work that we've been doing, and I just, sometimes some, showing something simple just makes a big difference, so, but nonetheless, let's go on, Ms. Johnson, followed by Mr. Driggs. Okay, thank you. I've talked to Councilmember Newton about the Eastland, the Sun, I, I guess there was a logo that used to be at the mall, that's somewhere in storage, I don't know if that could be.
Yes, I don't know where, what storage unit that would be, Mr. Driggs?
We talked about it, right?
You gonna figure that out?
For overnight rest.
Oh, it's stored?
Okay. Yeah, that'd be a nice monument for that area, I just thought, I mean.
Okay.
Hey, we got good ideas, right?
I've heard so much about that, yeah, okay. And then, speaking of branding, so District Four, and Mr. Jones and I have had a talk about 85 and Sugar Creek, and although I won't be the, the representative for, once that area is moved to District One, I want Hidden Valley residents to know that, that you still have me on council, and your at-large rep, and whoever that District One person will be, to continue to advocate for that area. So, Mr. Jones, I thought that Sugar Creek and 85 was next in line after Beatty Ford, or somewhere on a priority list for this year to have some attention, can you clarify?
Yeah, so we, we do them in pairs, so we did have West Boulevard and Beatty Ford in, let's call it round one, round two is I-85, Sugar Creek, and Central Avenue-Albemarle, and so, yes, and so you did a design sprint, so what's, as Mr. Graham has said, these corridors are all unique, and you have the citizen engagement, which is extremely important, and there was something a little bit different with I-85 and Sugar Creek, and that was the design sprint, so absolutely, you are well down the road of being finished with your playbook, yes.
Well, you know, there's been a lot of misinformation about me and, and Hidden Valley and all of that, so I just want them to know that there's, you know, councilmembers are still fighting for them, and then, secondly, branding, the university area, there's something in the pipeline about more branding for the university area, the whole, I, I think it's banners from the, from the streetlights or from the poles, there's something pending, can you follow up on that?
Sure.
Because we really like to brand that area, the university area, it's from university, UNC Charlotte, and we know the Tar Heels won, you know, so it's the association, and so, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, that was a stretch, but now.
No, it's USC, right?
You go back to the Sun now, so, thank you.
But still, it's still a winning school, whether or not it's, but we.
All of the system schools are.
Yes, we really want to brand that area, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. As a supplement to the chair's report, I just wanted to mention that the committee actually met earlier today as well, and we talked about the UDO Economic Impact Analysis, Higher Charlotte, and Partner Program update, so I'm sure we'll have a report, in our report house at the next strategy session about that, I just wanted to let me, people know that meeting took place, the materials are on the website for the committee, so if anybody wants to preview that, they can, and again, I'm sure the, the chair will have a chance to talk about that at our next strategy session. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Driggs. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up to Mr. Graham's point about Albemarle and Central corridor, and really addressing the displacement that has occurred of our vendors and entrepreneurs who have really made that side and brought traction to that side, I, I just want to emphasize that again, that as we consider proposal for Eastland redevelopment and move forward with our next step, we have to figure out a way to make these entrepreneurs and these vendors part of the larger development, so that, that they are sharing the prosperity and being part of the catalyst, rather than being displaced or, or by this redevelopment, and also to tie it all in, to tie everything together with our international, international culture on Charlotte East, that also needs to be part of the overall redevelopment, and how minority entrepreneurs and folks of different cultures will get an opportunity to be part of this redevelopment. We have entrepreneurs along Central and Albemarle, comes from so many different countries, and they all bring something so unique that cannot be found in other parts of our city, and I think, like Mayor said, we ought to celebrate that, but I just want to make sure that we are looking at opportunities that they are all part of this redevelopment. Thank you.
All right, I think those are all the comments regarding the economic development, great work, thank you.
They can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Ashmira, that is the last of the comments from, for economic development, so now, we will go to the Budget and Governance Report from Mr. Driggs, and knowing that we have a budget workshop this week.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do indeed, and in fact, our committee meeting on March 7th, which included myself as chair, Ms. Ashmira as vice chair, and councilmembers Bukhari, Isol, and Phillips, we basically previewed the presentations that we will see on Wednesday, so I'm not going to tell you much more about them, basically, we saw the budget outlook for our enterprise funds, and we'll have a chance to go into those in detail, so as I say, I think that's really all I have to report, but Madam Mayor, if I may, as, as a point of personal privilege, I did also want to report to the council that there was a rally yesterday for Ukraine, and, which I attended along with the mayor, Pro Tem, and councilmember Ashmira, I read our resolution suspending our sister-city ties between the city of Charlotte and the city of Vornish, including our condemnation of the Russian invasion, our affirmation of support for Ukraine, and acknowledging the brave citizens of Ukraine, and I just wanted to tell council that was very well received by the Ukrainian community that attended that rally, and I think it's a good thing we did, and I hope we will continue to support Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Driggs, we all wish that there were peace in this world, and obviously, we're not meeting that mark at all, and, and many people are being harmed and hurt, and, and the loss of life is just astounding, we stand with the Ukrainians and, and hope and pray that things do improve over the next several weeks, now that they're beginning to have some conversations. With that, I think Ms. Johnson wanted to be recognized on, from, from the Budget and Governance Report, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. So, you all know, we've been out in, in the public a lot more and hearing from folks during reelection season, and we're getting questions about transparency, we're also getting questions about just different policies, so I wanted to ask, I wanted to follow up and ask about the, the pending referral with the number of votes necessary to move item forward, that's been pending at this committee, I'd say, for over, or almost a year, so I wanted to know what the status of that referral was.
What is item four?
It's the City Council Rules of Procedure, and I know I brought up, I think it was last April, or, I, I don't, I hope it was in April 2020, but we talked about the number of council members that was needed to move an item forward on our agenda, right now, it's six of us need to agree, and we, we talked about changing that, so, Mayor, can you, or Mayor, or Mr. Driggs, can you give me an update on the status of that, or, or what happens when it's not heard at the committee level?
I, I think though, the agenda items are normally developed in consultation with the city attorney, and we haven't had any further input on the topic, frankly, so I think if it's the will of council that we put that on the agenda for action, we can do so, but there, there really hasn't been any further input on the subject since it was first proposed.
So what's the process if something's, refresh my memory, Patrick, if you can, something's sent to the agenda, excuse me, to the committee, there are X number of days for it to be brought back before council, right, or the next step is to what?
I don't know that I've seen that level of precision in terms of when that comes back, that's typically at the committee level, I'm trying to pull up the committee information, but I can certainly get that to you, I don't know if Ms. James knows that off the top of her head or not.
Okay, well, I know that it was referred in April, so I don't know if it was April 2021, or 20, or 20, I, I know it was during the COVID.
It was during COVID.
Isolation, yeah, so if we could bring that up before council, Mayor, if it goes on the agenda, I, I think, I think from a transparency perspective, it's time to take a look at that, also, Mr. Driggs or Mayor, have, have we talked about looking at the city ethics policies, is there, is that anywhere on our, our radar? Yeah.
My understanding, and I will again refer to the attorney, is that we did do a revision that council adopted in the last 18 months, I'm sure.
Yes, it was adopted back in March of 2021.
Madam Chair, I, I can speak to that as well, we, we did, in fact, following a spate of ethics allegations.
Yeah, okay.
We did a pretty thorough review, we made a, a couple of changes, and I, I feel that the committee has addressed that topic, unless somebody wants to reopen it.
Well, you know, and I was on the committee then, so I, but I think, I'd like to look at, when we talk about transparency, we're a big city, but I think many of the things that we do are with the kind of a, of a small-town feel, and that's kind of what, what gets known as the Charlotte Way, so I really, there are, there are things I'd like to take a look at that in some areas would be obvious, conflicts of interest, or, so I really think that we can ta, take, should take a look at some of the things that are allowed from a city staff and fraternization perspective, so I think I would like to take a look at the fraternization policies with, with city staff and developers, and, you know, candidates and all of that, so I think that that's an area that I think that we should tighten up, Mayor, also, I, I would just like to take a look at even some of the questions that we're getting, is, is like, I, I'd just like to take a look at the different, our policies, I, I, and make sure that if we really want change in the city, that there are boundaries and, and rules and ethics that are very, and our rules are very tight as far as what's allowed, the fraternization, and.
Ms. Johnson, if, if I may comment on that, you're, you're, you're bending about some terms here, about ethics, transparency, and so on, and, and there seems to be a sort of an insinuation of impropriety, and I have to tell you, the rules we have on conduct are actually pretty comprehensive in terms of the integrity of the way we work, I'm not personally aware of a lot of reasons to feel that there are gaps in our structure that are allowing things to happen that shouldn't be allowed to happen, but I really think it would be helpful if you could be a little more precise in terms of the issue you want to address, so that we can establish whether or not it's covered by our existing policies, because the policies are actually pretty clear about the way we're expected to behave, what constitutes a, a material breach, there are state laws that are involved there, so we would need to have this conversation in the context of the, the letter of what exists today, and exactly what it is that your. exists today and exactly what it is that you're suggesting is being, is happening that doesn't comport with that. I, I don't think it's helpful to, in a council meeting, to, to make suggestions about improper behavior by members of council and, and not in the interest of transparency frankly, to be perfectly clear about what the issue is.
Well, let me be clear. I'm not alluding that any council member is inappropriate. I'm talking about public stewardship and being above approach in our policies. So I would just like to take a look from a governance perspective, and I don't know if that's a referral and we can talk about it, but I would like, and I don't know if that's internal audit, I think that's been something that's been requested in the, in the past as far as our policies, but I want to make sure that our policies are befitting for one of the largest cities and that we are transparent and, and operating in good public stewardship.
Well, I, I would just say, I believe they are, one, and, and two, I'm not sure that's an actionable referral, so I would suggest that you look again at the policies we have and, and figure out where you think the deficiencies are. And I'm very happy then on behalf of the committee, at the request of council, to go back and look at those. But, but to repeat, we did conduct a, an extensive review, the council did a lot of work and personally, I, I think we're in a good place. So maybe you and I can talk offline, if you could point out to me where you think these issues are and we can work up a recommendation to the full council on what the committee might want to look at.
Okay.
But I, I don't know that, from what you're saying right now, I wouldn't even know where to start. So again, maybe we should talk offline or you can talk to the city attorney and then I'm happy to be guided by what comes out of that conversation. Personally, I believe that our, our ethics requirements are actually competitive with those of any other city.
All right. I do want to say that we are at a point that I think we will be having a new council come in. There will be new members and new leadership and I think that this is the kind of work that would be best done after the election. Right now, we're all in campaigning and, and some of us are lucky enough not to be campaigning, Mr. Phipps and Mayor Protem, but I think that when you're looking at something like this, excuse me, it should be an area where we have the opportunity to have the council members first review what they are, what they are, as Mr. Driggs said. But I think the idea of the two of you working together to identify those things that we, that we should take a deeper look and to see how we compare and what we're doing here, I think that's important. But I do want to say, in my airport announcement, I always say that we're a big city with a small town feel.
Yeah, yeah. Small town feel is good, but small town policies or rules aren't, but.
Part of us, I don't mean this, I just meant it as a fun kind of thing. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, Ms. Johnson. I'm basically saying, I think there's a balance that has to be struck between what this council does as a whole after the election and how do we see ourselves and brand ourselves differently? So.
So let me, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, let, so let me, I understand the, the policy overview, but the, the referral that was made to the committee back in April, we, we're not going to wait for a new council to follow up on that, are we?
I actually think that that would be one that the new council should take a look at. I mean, I, I just, it's just, that's an opinion. It's not something that this council may agree with, but I, I feel like, when's the election? May?
Seventeen.
May 17? That's really amount of time.
Mayor, that's the primary, the election is in July.
The primaries is in, sorry, it's in, our primary is the 17th and the election is July.
July 26.
July. So in the next six to eight weeks, I mean, we'd have a newly, new, new council elected. So it's just an opinion that I have, especially with budget going on and a number of other efforts going on. I think it would be very helpful however, as you said, to work with Mr. Driggs and the city attorney to say where specifically you think these things ought to take place. And this is one that I would leave on the list. I just think that we should do it as a whole, but that's just an opinion. Not necessarily one that has to be.
Right. But I, and I agree, but can we have some accountability? I mean, none of us are guaranteed to be here the next term. I mean, hopefully, Mr. Driggs, okay, well, Mr. Driggs, we're going to put it, he's smiling way too mildly, way too wildly. And the staff will be here too. Whomever, yeah, the staff, can we put it on the staff to, to follow up on, at least the, the referral that was made in April to follow up on? Because, you know, we need some consistency that these referrals are, again, are resolved and it's been, been close to a year.
All right. I had Mayor Protem and then Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say, along those lines of big city, small town policies, we haven't changed our form of government since the 1970s, so whether it's the next council, which I suspect it will be, I'd like you to get back to this issue that came up. We had a governance committee that met. We had action items that came out of that that were pretty strongly supported by this governance committee regarding four-year terms, additional council districts. The, the four-year term thing, staggered terms, has been an issue I still feel strongly about. I can say it, I'm not running again, it's not self-serving, but we are a big city and we're running, we're running a form of government like a small town and it's got to change. We've got big issues that we're dealing with, with regards to the UDO, comprehensive plan mapping, all of that. And whether it's four-year staggered terms, so you give people the time to understand what they're even doing in this job, or legislative assistance, support for council members so they can get the work done and not be running every other year. It's ridiculous. And now that it's very official, I'm not running, I can say that very strongly. I think, I think the council needs some help to, to come into the modern age. So, thank you.
Someone said on day one, somebody going to say it on the day zero.
Ms. Watlington?
Second, Mayor Protem, that was actually something I was going to ask about. I know we talked maybe two months ago about this council, I know we talked two months ago about this council taking these items up before the new council. So, Mr. Driggs, where are we on some of these pending items specific to what Mayor Protem just discussed?
Can I, can I say something about that, Mr. Driggs? If I recall, it was the federal government and the former administration that pushed these things out. Remember, we didn't have maps, we didn't have any knowledge of when we would have districts, we didn't know anything at the time that these things were kind of adding up in terms of referral. I agree with the Mayor Protem. Yes, these are very important things to consider, but I don't think that we had the ability because we had no knowledge about what was, I mean, now we're a little bit more settled. We've done our redistricting our own. I just really wonder how much time the census information took for us to get it, to be able to actually consider what's going on. So that's part of the answer, I think.
Well, my question is not so much how we got here, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to understand, I know we talked about the primary being in six weeks, but the general being in July, we've got about four months. So I'm just curious as to what, where does it look, given that we talked about it?
I wasn't counting the weeks with the budget discussions. So I was kind of hoping that we would get through the budget first and before we took on a lot of these other, but that's up to the council and the workload that the council wants to have during the summer.
Right. I understand that and I can appreciate, I can appreciate that, but also given the shortened term next term, I do think that puts us right back in the same position that we would have been in now, considering that oftentimes come December, people are making announcements for the next term. So again, Mr. Driggs, where are we on these particular items at the bottom? Because like, like I said, I think it was last month or maybe the month before that we discussed going ahead and taking these up in this term. I wanted to know, what was the, what was the plan for these?
So on the four-year terms, we did talk in a committee meeting and I talked with the city attorney about the fact that there is a sequence of events, including a referendum that has to precede any action by council on that. In fact, there's an option. We could go ahead and try to change the length of our terms by ourselves, but that would be expose us to the possibility of a, of a petition with 5,000 signatures, which would require a referendum, or else we could decide in advance that we would go the route of the referendum. So the city attorney was going to prepare for us, maybe has, and we should be able to offer that, the kind of timeline which will indicate at what point in time we have to have made a decision about whether we're going to pursue the four-year terms. And I guess once we know what the lead time is and how that works, we'll also know whether it makes sense for the current council or the next council to follow up on it. It certainly won't be effective until the next council and in that sense, I think it makes sense for the next council to be the ones to decide on that change. I mentioned before, we've just had no input on the subject of the referral, the number of votes needed to refer. I, I think that's actually a pretty simple matter. I mean, we could have a, a, a short memo from the council as to what our rules of procedure are right now and then just put the question up for a vote. It's up or down, right? Is it five or six or whatever? I don't know that there are a lot of comparables. Anyway, that, that could be brought forward quickly and I don't think it's as important that we do that later rather than sooner. And the additional city council district definitely got buried in the redistricting process. There was no way we could really work on that while we were drawing the maps and while everybody else was drawing their maps and we were still processing the census data. So I, I would say what, what we can do in the near term, what I can work on in the near term is getting that timeline and basically identifying the period in time during which we would have to act in order for the next available transition to four-year terms to take place. We can get something on the agenda pretty soon for the referrals. Virtual meetings, we already had reached a conclusion on that, we took action on that with one issue that was still not fully resolved and that was whether or not members of council could participate in meetings virtually if they had an illness issue or a family emergency. But otherwise, the intention was that when the state of emergency is lifted, there will be a presumption that council members participate in meetings in person. And we haven't fully decided yet whether there would be an exclusion on those two points. And I believe we also have decided that committee meetings can be conducted virtually. So I think that's the status and I'll, I'll get with the city attorney offline to work out a timeline for getting back to council with updates on those.
Thank you. I would just offer as it relates to the four-year terms, and I know you went back and corrected it, so I just want to repeat it so we're all clear. We don't need to have a referendum, we do have an option to vote and I don't, I don't, I don't believe that we have to wait until we get a timeline to decide whether or not we do want to take action, but I would, I would be interested in what the rest of the colleagues say. I know, well, again, we've already discussed that once and I don't know if we can do a show of hands or whatever, but if we've got six and we're interested in, in moving forward in a direction, I think it's time to go ahead and do that. As it relates to some of the other items, Councilman Driggs, thank you for that. I do think there's a couple of these that could be knocked out quickly and I'd like to see us do that. As it relates to additional city council district, that's another one that I'm looking forward to see what the, what the timeline is. But I don't want us to get caught up in going back to get more information. There's clearly political will here. We've got information from the Public VR Governance Committee. I think it's time to act. Thanks.
I do feel that on the subject of the four-year terms, there are people on this council who will not be around to have to make a, to be affected by that decision. So I think the more people that are in, who make, make that vote, who will be affected by the decision, the better. And especially given the short timeline until the election, it, it strikes me that that really is one that we probably should take up with the next council.
I would disagree on that simply because it's the people who are disinterested that should be making the decision. They're not making it selfishly. But again, I would like to see where we are with that.
I, Mr. Winston, but.
Can I just make a quick comment to respond to that with a big, okay?
Is that all right? I think the other point is anybody who comes on this council is brand new, has no idea how long it takes to come up to this job. And so having three dispassionate council members who aren't coming back, I think gives more of an unbiased opinion. And I just want to point out again that I think 75% of the cities in this state have four-year terms. You know, this is just outdated. If nothing else, our mayor's seat should be a four-year term. There's too much important work to be going on for especially the mayor that, who raises a lot more money. So I, whether it's this council or the next council, you know, your all's call, but, well, okay. But I do think that it should be split and it should be two separate votes, council and the mayor. City of Boston has two different, you know, the mayor's two years, council's four years, which is odd, but anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Greg is not coming back?
I got a question.
Okay.
So I would thank Ms. Isolde and Ms. Watlington, because I agree much with you, what you said. I would disagree with, it doesn't matter if a council member has spent one, one day in office or, or 15 years and is, is on their way out. Every council member has the right and prerogative to, to make the same choice regardless of how disinterested they may be or not. And I think that's a dangerous kind of precedent to set as, as, as who has the right to vote on what, when. I, I think, I think that's a very slippery slope. But to Ms. Isolde and Ms. Watlington's point, and I'm going to respectfully disagree with the mayor and Mr. Driggs, I, I think, Ms. Kelly, we really need to go back to some of the records because we have taken positions on this. And this committee, this council has said that very specifically, it should be this council that deals with this issue because we did commission the, the committee that reported to this council. And, and this was something, as Ms. Watlington said, through the, the council's votes has said we wanted to do. And I, I think we should go back and, and really understand what the will of the council is and not the will of a few of us, because I do believe that we have that on the record and it is, it is very clear to that point. And we even did consider the issues surrounding the delay of the election, that there were issues in here around governance that were separate, that were, were running parallel to the ability to hold said elections, including that, those, that, that eighth district, because that was in the, the greater context of our ability, our, our governance structure that allows us to have 12 members of council, but we are only using 11. We wanted to talk about whether that was something that we needed to do or we needed to have our full bed of, of, of representatives at, at the table and whether or not we should reconstitute the, the committees. I would even remember when we did, took the redistricting votes, that was something that was pending over that entire conversation. So I do believe that we should spend, be very diligent in these next four months of this term and, and get this done because I think, again, I think that's not just my opinion, I think that's what this council has said in the past from a six-vote standpoint. And we should be very clear about that. Thank you. Ms. Kelly, I guess, I don't know if we can work, I don't know how we would scrub all of those, because this wasn't just one conversation, this happened over several conversations from once that a governance committee's report was given us. It happened in committee conversations and full council conversations. Thank you.
Mr. Winston, you're saying that there was in fact a vote to the effect that this council would resolve the issue?
Yeah, I, I agree with, I mean, I think that's what Ms. Watlington and Ms. Isolde was alluding to. When we put it into, when we put it into committee, we said, no, this isn't just a die, we need a workflow and this, this needs to come back to this committee. I think we were thinking that it was going to come back in the spring, right around this time, before budget, so we.
Let's, let's just check the record. I don't know if there was a formal vote or a vote just to send it to committee and to have it come back out, but that's easily found. Okay? Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thanks. And while we're checking the record, if you could check the record to see when the referral was made regarding the number of council members to get something on the agenda. And I think this whole conversation only confirms the need to, to have less than six council members to get something on the agenda. You know, we bring things in interest of our, of our constituents and currently, it takes the majority of council to even discuss something at a council meeting. So I, I think it's important that, that this item be discussed and if, if it's the will of the council, that there be four council members, I mean, some, and I don't know what you would say, Mr. Baker, but it's, having I mean, some, and I don't know what you would say, Mr. Baker, but it's, having the majority to have something on the, to put something on the agenda, almost feels like a vote before the vote. And I know that the county commission doesn't require a majority in order to get something for the members to talk about, so...
Ms. Johnson, I beg to differ a little bit. We're having a conversation right now that's not anywhere close to what's on an agenda. We do have discussions, and in fact, we've tried to encourage that in these sessions by reversing the agenda order. And so I think that we really are trying to figure that out. Now, however, I understand also what you're saying, which is...
Yeah, we can't vote on it if it's not on the agenda.
Well, that's...
And that's been, that's how we move things forward, is a vote.
The vote on it on the agenda is to have everybody prepared to vote on it.
Okay.
And there's a rationale for it, but that doesn't really matter.
Right. But I'm just saying, it has to be on the agenda in order to vote on it, in order to change things. So if we can just, we're just, we've asked for this, it was referred to committee, and I'd just like a follow-up. So if, Ms. Kelly, if you can let us know the date that that was referred, and Patrick or Lena, there's a rule, and I don't have it in front of me, about bringing things back from the committee. I think the requister can ask for it to be placed on the agenda. So if you could just let us know, that would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I'm willing to stipulate that there was a vote, and that it was a long time ago. I really don't think we need to put that work on the city clerk. Yes, it was, there was a vote, it was a long time ago, you're correct. And we don't need any further evidence of that. Let's just make work.
Okay, okay. So then the next step is to put it on the next agenda, then?
Well, I'll talk to the city attorney, and we'll get it on the agenda soon, very soon. I don't know whether that's next week, or, I can't make that commitment, but we will act on this quickly, yes.
And that's great, but, so if I, again, Patrick, if I can get the rule so that it's not up to any chair, any specific council member, if we can find out what the process should be. Thank you.
I'll get all that information for you.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other question before the Budget and Governance Committee? Any other comments? I did not know that Mr. Driggs had such an exciting agenda today. I was just waiting for Wednesday. I was just waiting for Wednesday. All right, then that concludes the council committee report outs. I think it was a good discussion, a great meeting, around what needs to be done and what could move forward. All right, the second item on our agenda is the Housing Trust Fund recommendations. Mr. Jones?
So, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Sean Heath will come in and give you an update on the Housing Trust Fund recommendations. As you may recall, it's this time of year where we have an opportunity for both 9% credits and 4% credits. And we'll also have an American Rescue Plan update after that, and I think Sean will tag-team that with our CIO, Renee Askew. And then we have a city code update, which will be led by the city attorney, Patrick Baker. And then we have several closed-session items. That was, that was a joke.
You live very dangerously, Mr. Manager.
So, Sean?
The book is coming for you.
Sean?
Okay, okay, to start? Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the introduction. With the Housing Trust Fund, as Manager Jones referred to, this is our season for an RFP. And tonight's, I know that everybody on council is very familiar with the process, very familiar with all of the policies that support the work that we do in the Housing Trust Fund. But we'll spend just a moment to talk about recent performance with the Housing Trust Fund, a little bit of context around the process and the timeline associated with the RFP. Then we'll quickly move into the meat of the presentation, which is staff's recommendations for the available funding, and also talk about next steps in terms of where we're headed over the next few months. In terms of the overview, the Housing Trust Fund, of course, is the signature tool for the city of Charlotte in terms of having gap financing that can advance affordable housing developments. As the manager mentioned, April is the timeframe when we will generally see a mix of 4% and 9% Lytec deals, along with homeownership as well, which you'll see on recommendation this evening related to homeownership. And the last two bullet points on this slide make direct reference to, not the most important, but two certainly very important features of your policy framework. One is the emphasis on having at least 20% of the units targeted to 30% AMI households and below. And the second is whether it relate to rental projects or homeownership scenarios. All of these deals will have long-term deed restrictions associated with them. This is a bit of context around the trust fund itself, reinforcing some points that I made on February 7th, when I was giving a broad overview. So this is a anniversary year for the Housing Trust Fund, 20 years ago, since the trust fund started to receive funds that were then put into the community for affordable housing units. You can see some of the metrics that we've shared here. Over the course of 20 years, the Housing Trust Fund has created or preserved close to 11,000 units, close to 900 shelter beds. If you focus your attention on the 2018 and 2020 bonds, where, as we talked about in February, there's been so much activity from council and from the private sector, but from council in particular around strengthening the policy framework associated with affordable housing, and then injecting additional funds into this space. And you can see the footnotes here and the numbers on the side showing that since 2018, roughly 4,500 units have been created or preserved, and 194 shelter beds. So the work of council to inject additional resources into this space has truly allowed staff to accelerate and scale the work in a meaningful way. As I shared on February 7th, you know, we recognize the size of the challenge that we're faced with here. We're not in any way trying to suggest that the mission is accomplished here, but we carry momentum into this work. And one important point on the trust fund, if you think about the roughly $200 million that the city has invested into these projects over the last 20 years, we achieve a lot of leverage with this funding. So that $200 million is then paired with well over $1 billion worth of investments from other sources. So that would include CHOIF from Lisk, most recently over the last few years. The Lytec funding, of course, is of great significance to the 4% and the 9% deals, and then the conventional financing that these developers bring into the equation. What some of you, all of you, may have seen already in the booklet we provided related to the 20-year anniversary, I like the way it references the metric, where for every dollar that the city has put into the Housing Trust Fund over this period of time, that's been matched by about $6 to $7 from other sources. So, and hopefully, that's a further demonstration of the city getting a good value for this Just a quick recap on where we are. If you go back to 2018 and 2020 with the $50 million bonds in both of those cycles, giving us the $100 million here as a starting point, so to speak, in row one, as alluded to on the last slide, put a lot of that work, almost, or, sorry, a lot of that funding, almost all of that funding, to work through allocations and commitments. You can see the $90 million there, with a remaining balance as of the end of December 2021 of about $9.4 million. So that number should look familiar. It's the exact same number that former Housing Director Wyman shared with you in September of 2021. It's the same number that I shared with you on February 7th. And moving down here on the Brookhill set-aside, staff's recommendation reflected in tonight's proposals is that now is the appropriate time to release the Brookhill set-aside associated with the Housing Trust Fund. So back in 2020, of course, there were many conversations with council throughout the calendar year about the Brookhill proposals, culminating in an October of 2020, decision by council to earmark or set aside $3 million, in hopes that the developer Lookout Ventures could pull together a viable financing plan, a permanent financing plan, and also with suitable affordability period. So that set-aside was put in place with some conditions. As you're aware, there was really no movement, there was no additional traction on that proposal during calendar year 2021. And then just about a month ago, that development has changed hands from an ownership perspective. So we are certainly, you know, looking forward to having conversations with the new ownership group and Mike Griffin, which we plan to do very soon, just to get a sense as their plans are emerging and they're setting some sense for how they want to move that project forward, we'll be very receptive to finding ways to continue to work with them. But we have projects that are ready now, so from staff's point of view, this is a prudent time to consider releasing that set-aside. Importantly, because this is about people, more than it's about numbers, we continue to be engaged with Brookhill residents as of the end of calendar year 2021. There were roughly 120 occupied apartments at Brookhill. Housing and Neighborhood Services has a community engagement team. Our community engagement team will continue to support Brookhill residents, looking for opportunities to help facilitate and refer to partner organizations. We worked with the United Way and UNC Charlotte late last year to do a community needs assessment. And one of the needs that certainly rose to the top was support related to housing navigation, for example. So that's the sort of thing that we're continuing, trying to find ways to support Brookhill residents, as they continue to kind of work through this period of uncertainty. So with the additional $3 million, that would provide an available balance of $12.4 million for Housing Trust Fund at this point. A quick recap on the timeline. This is very consistent with the way we've approached the trust fund timeline in the past, releasing the RFP in late January with a submission deadline, middle of February date. Council briefing tonight with council approval next Monday. That is more compressed than usual. Typically, you would have more time between the briefing and seeking your approval, but we're dealing with a couple dynamics here, one of which, of course, is you only have one business meeting in the month of April. And then we also have to keep in mind that there's a May 13 Lytec application deadline, and we want to ensure that we're giving developers enough time subsequent to your vote to have all of their materials ready to meet that application deadline. Community participation, no changes here, and this is something you'd be familiar with, but we wanted to reinforce it, because it's an important feature in the process, is that developers are required to have at least two community input sessions to share information about the proposed development, to address questions and any concerns that residents may have. So that's something that we continue to require. No changes to the Housing Trust Fund evaluation criteria, but it's always worth taking a moment to just reflect on this, because this is quite helpful for staff. It's incredibly helpful, because this gives us a really firm sense for what are council's priorities as it relates to bringing projects online in Charlotte. So, you know, there are a range of factors that we would consider. Every proposal that we receive through the Housing Trust Fund RFP process goes through this evaluation process. On city policies, affordability period would be an example of something that's of great interest. On development strength, we're interested in the number of units, we're interested in the AMI mix. Developer experience always matters. Financial strength, you're, of course, accustomed to some of the metrics that we focus on in terms of cost per unit, and the leverage that we're able to achieve on these deals. Community engagement, which I just referenced, and then the location site score, which is based on the council-approved affordable housing location guidelines. Which is a segue into the next slide. Here's just a quick snapshot around the location guidelines that were established by council in 2019. And this really just reinforces for us that, while we always care about the number of units, the quantity of affordable housing units always matters to us, location of the units does as well. The quality of the units matters as well. You can see here the four scoring criteria, no changes to these, of course, since your policy was established. And this also summarizes the types of proposals where the location guidelines are applicable and those for which they are not applicable. Okay. Here's a snapshot on the staff's recommendations for this Housing Trust Fund RFP. You can see there's a mix of opportunities here, one 4% deal, five at the 9% level, one homeownership opportunity. We have good representation across the city. Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are reflected across the scope of these deals. You can see here that these recommendations in aggregate would bring roughly 600 additional units online. Tying back to a previous slide where I mentioned or alluded to the fact that since 2018, the trust fund has enabled roughly 4,700 units. So with an additional 600, that would move us beyond that symbolic threshold of 5,000 units since the 2018 bond was passed. I would say here, just as a reminder, of course, with the 9% deals, historic with our past practice, we will move the 9% deals through these conversations with council, recognizing that four would likely be the maximum number of 9% deals that the city of Charlotte would have approved by the North Carolina housing finance agencies. Three might be considered a more likely outcome, and theoretically could be as few as two. So we don't know exactly how this plays out. That's always the case this time of year. That process will move forward through August of this year, but this is our practice in the past in terms of how we frame the 9% deals, knowing that we may not get all of them. And if we don't, that would just create some additional capacity back into the trust fund for council to evaluate how to move forward. One last thing I'll mention here, which is a difference from previous cycles, for this particular round, we don't have CHOIF by our side as a partner in terms of the great work that Lisk has done in the community with their fundraising efforts a few years ago, and all of the funding that they've programmed has enabled or has supported about 1,500 affordable housing units here in the community. We, historically, will go through these RFPs as partners in terms of the whole application process. I mentioned to you in February, CHOIF is really in the process of doing their fundraiser, or Lisk is in the process of doing their fundraising in hopes of standing up a CHOIF round two. They have a target of raising an additional $50 million, and they hope to close on that by the end of the second quarter. So I'm staying in contact with Ralphine Caldwell and team, and we look forward to seeing how that fundraising effort goes for them, in hopes of being partners once again in our next RFP cycle. This is just a quick snapshot that shows you, for those 600 units, what does the AMI mix look like between 30 and 80%? These percentages, of course, will bounce around a little bit from cycle to cycle. I did peek back at the April of '21 presentation and the September of '21 presentation, and these percentages are fairly consistent with what we experienced last year. So, of course, you would expect the 30% AMI and below would have to be at least 20%. So we've got a little bit of margin above that one here. The next few slides provide a real high-level snapshot for each of the recommended proposals, and consistent with the approach we've taken the last few years with council on these slides, I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. We provide you with a brochure or a booklet that you'll remember from prior cycles. We're going to get that to you by Wednesday of this week. We know you're working on a little bit of a compressed timeframe, so instead of waiting until Friday, we're striving to get that ready for you by Wednesday, so you've got a few days with the booklet, because the booklet will have a lot more details about each of the recommended proposals, including what you see here, as well as some additional information. The first one here is the 1 4% deal in the mix, and after that, we'll go through the 9% real quickly. So you can see Forest Park Apartments here in District 3 with HTF request of 2.5 million for 200 units. Moving into the slate of the 9% deals, here's North Lake Center Apartments in District 4, HTF request of $500,000 for 78 units. And just as an FYI, out of curiosity, I couldn't help but look back at our leverage ratios and our city investment per unit in our last couple RFP cycles. And you see a fair amount of variability from cycle to cycle, but there wasn't anything that really jumped off the page at me that I wanted to highlight for you. You know, these are generally consistent with what we've seen in the past. Moving here to Evoque Living, which is in District 5, another 9% deal, close to 2.5 HTF request. You can see the AMI mix there, total units of 78. Continuing to move at warp speed here, Mallard Creek Seniors, this one is another 9% deal, focused on senior community, $2.95 million HTF request at 102 units. Of course, the 9% deals are typically smaller in size than the 4%. Here we've got Marvin Road Apartments, District 1, $2.24 million HTF request and 70 total Parkside at Long Creek, District 4, 1.487 HTF request with 57 units. And here's the one homeownership opportunity that we have built in to today's recommendations. Thinking back, having homeownership as an option for HTF funds is something that was a... endorsed and kind of put forward by council, I believe, in late 2020. We didn't have any homeownership recommendations in the April cycle last year. We did have a couple in the September cycle of 2021. So, you know, still kind of new at this game, but certainly understanding that homeownership is a particular area of interest for council. I think for the homeownership one, what I reinforce here, and then also when you review your booklets, this is just a different animal, right? It doesn't necessarily lend itself to an apples-to-apples comparison with all of the previous slides in the rental space. And what I mean by that, for example, if you take a look at the financial summary where we've got the HTF request of 230,000, complemented here by a CDBG request of 800, or CDBG recommendation of 894,000. So unlike the rental deals that have potential access to either 4% or 9% Lytech, Lytech's not available for homeownership. So, but there still is a need for gap funding. So under homeownership scenarios like this, we're having to evaluate what's the best way to cobble together available resources in order to provide the gap funding necessary for the economics for this sort of a deal to work out. Now, I will say, even with homeownership, that on the HTF side, we do have guidelines in terms of the maximum size of an award and also in terms of the city investment per unit related specifically to the HTF piece. And those guidelines in terms of the max amount are different based on the scenario. So if it's an HTF-only request, the guidelines are at a certain level. If it's an HTF deal with other forms of funding from federal sources such as this, the amount that we could deploy would be a little bit less in terms of the total request as well as the city investment per unit. As I just said, that I realize it probably wasn't that helpful without having an illustration in front of us to look at, but I just wanted to draw that out. In all instances, we're looking for, what are the available fund sources that we have at our discretion to help make these deals possible? And one thing in particular that caught my eye about this was an attractive AMI mix. Still have a very small sample size when we think about the homeownership things that we did last year, but having some homeownership opportunities here outside of the 61% to 80% range, so we've got four in the 51% to 60, and seven in the 31% to 50, that was noteworthy. This is a little bit hard possibly for you to see, but this shows you where each of the recommended proposals are on the map. As I mentioned before, we've got good representation across districts 1 through 5. You know, we're exploring these types of challenges and opportunities through various mechanisms, and we've already talked about leveraging city-owned land for affordable housing. Those conversations, separate and distinct from this particular HTF round, but you'll recall, there was one deal in District 7 that we're in conversation with now. So we're doing what we can to try and find opportunities to have affordable housing in opportunity areas across the city. Almost at the end here, this is just a quick recap in terms of, starting with the 12.4, if we assume council's comfort with releasing the Brook Hill set aside, then there's 12.4 million dollars available. One 4% deal here shown, and then the aggregate 9% deals, as I've said before, we won't know until August how many of those 9% deals are approved by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And then we have the one Habitat homeownership Development Opportunity here, which, for all intents and purposes, all of those combined would essentially deplete the available From a transparency perspective and an awareness perspective, we did just want to acknowledge that here's the mix of project opportunities that came our way that are not included in our recommended funding proposals tonight. And we had signaled in early February, I signaled on February 7 when we were talking about the Housing Trust Fund, that this would be a very competitive round, and it was. So having these here, I know I want to suggest that these were weak proposals. All the proposals we got, we were certainly intrigued by, and I would suspect that many, if not all these, frankly, will probably come back at a future cycle, and we'll be excited to see them again. So at this point, just wanted you to be aware that these were on the list. All of them went through the full evaluation process. I won't go back to the slide, but that's why the evaluation process is helpful, because it gives us the most objective way that we have in order to help ensure that with finite resources, we can live within our means and deploy the available funding on the projects that score the highest, so to speak. So hopefully, there'll be more to come on these particular opportunities in our next And then last, just a reminder on how the process and timeline works from here. So looking to next Monday as the opportunity for council approval, then for the 4% and 9% deals, working, those developers then working on submittals and approvals by May, hearing back in August, as I mentioned before, if some of the 9% recommendations that were shared tonight are not approved, that would bring some capacity back into the Housing Trust Fund. We've shown a range here just for illustrative purposes. We don't know exactly how much it will be because we don't know exactly which deals they may or may not approve, but just to give you an order of magnitude sense for how it could shake out, it could be a million and a half to three and a half million dollars that becomes available later in the year. If that's the case, staff would assess the situation at that point in time, and we would bring you back in a recommendation on what to do with it. Some of the deals that we're not recommending today could be attractive, and we could bring those back up for discussion. NOAs, we're always opportunistically evaluating where the NOAA opportunities are in the marketplace. So just holding on to the money until the next RFP cycle, there's a whole range of things that could potentially be done that we can only really speculate on as we sit here today. That is the conclusion of the overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Or we have Sean answer additional questions from the council. Mr. Jones.
Well, thank you, Mayor and members of council, and Sean, thank you, and the collective team for all the hard work that you have gone through to get us to this point. I will tell you that this reminds me a little bit about the last bond that we had as it relates to the Trust Fund, where we actually oversubscribed, and it was a weird place to be in because we depended on a future bond that had not been approved to potentially cover some of the projects. So I say that because let's hope that LISC will be successful in their raising of funds because this is the first time that we don't have that LISC piece. And there were certain things we did, tried to cap some of our investments at 2 million and things like that, but it didn't always pan out that way. So I would say that there are a lot of opportunities tonight, but also as we start to think about NOAs. And I'll tell, I'll say this to you, Councilmember Winston, I think you started this a few years ago, talking about the net loss and not just what we're gaining. And it's come to me recently that there's not a lot of folks out in the space that's looking at the NOAs to preserve. So I would just put out to this council, as you think about not just this round, but future rounds, you know, having that preservation has always been a part of the playbook, if you will, as it relates to housing. And having the NOAs and having the resources to act quickly is extremely important because, again, we are losing some of the units that are currently in the ground that are affordable. And then lastly, I'll just say, a lot of what happens tonight goes back to one of Sean's early slides, and that is how Brook Hill is handled, because that does create additional capacity to at least fund the recommendations that are before you tonight.
So with that said, Mayor, I turn it back over to the council.
Thank you. As people have raised their hands, I have the following list. Ms. Watlington, Mr. Phipps, Mr. Winston, Mr. Graham, Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Eggleston. Ms. Watlington, I'm sorry, and Mr. Driggs.
I think you, I have a question in regards to the Brook Hill set aside. As you mentioned, Sean, we've got the needs assessment from a couple of months ago, and we spent some time talking with the Brook Hill residents here in the last couple of months. And one of the major needs they'll have is money relocating. Can you talk a little bit more about where we would get those funds to respond to the needs assessment should something happen at Brook Hill that we wouldn't know, that we would no longer need this 3 million?
Yes, and I think the starting point for us would be looking for opportunities to find partners, because we have partners in the community, you know, some of which I made reference to last week in the discussion around the HomeARP funds for housing navigation, for example. So housing navigation partners not only help with the search process, but in certain instances have funds available to support transitions in terms of moving expenses, security deposits, and that sort of thing. So I think first and foremost, that's where we would focus our attention coming out of the gates. And through those conversations, there may be opportunities for us to identify, are there appropriate ways for us to inject some additional city resources where we can in order to support and facilitate that effort? I don't think we're at the step yet, and we can get there, I think, fairly quickly, where I would have a specific number, for instance, to suggest to you. It certainly in staff's mind wouldn't be any sort of a one-for-one relationship. I think the, you know, the $3 million was specifically designated as gap funding for, you know, hundreds of units of affordable housing theoretically. If we can find community partners to work with, that would be in a very targeted way. And I think through that process, we can evaluate if and how city can actually step in as well.
Okay. I would definitely want to see that, to get comfortable releasing the full 3 million without having an understanding of what is needed for the Brook Hills residents, because I certainly understand it's in different buckets, but as it shows up to the people who live there, there were $3 million in resources that they may have been able to leverage, whether that was through, well, specifically through the redevelopment and having affordable housing still at Brook Hill in their neighborhood. And so I just want to make sure that if they do have to relocate as a result of any upcoming development, that there is still some assistance that keeps them a whole versus where we were before. Obviously, we understand that the previous development through no fault of the city has not come to fruition, but I just want to make sure that we're not left looking for funds to help folks when we know there's a needs assessment. So to the extent that you can provide that soon, I would really appreciate it. The next question I have, or comment, rather, relates to the locational policy. If you could go back to that slide. So the fourth criteria here, change the level of displacement risk indicated by real estate market activity in historically lower-income neighborhoods. Certainly can understand why it's included in the locational policy. What I wonder is if there's an opportunity, as we think, to look ahead where we're not paying a premium for properties that are already in rapidly changing neighborhoods, if there's an opportunity to assess where we think that we can preserve affordability in other parts of the city. I know we've talked about this a little bit before, but I wanted to pinpoint it here, is that if we are already trying to shop in areas that are hot, if you will, we're paying more than we would have had we been ahead of the path of progress. So I would like to investigate this one a little bit more, even if it's within the Great Neighborhoods Committee, because I think there's an opportunity here to get a little bit out ahead of what we're trying to do now. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then finally, as it relates to Lytech, I know that this is a question I've asked a couple of times, and I don't know if the city attorney's still on the line, but we've got, we've got one of our attorneys here. You all have made it clear that Lytech dollars from the state are only available for rental. I would like to offer up that we potentially investigate what we need to do to work with the state to request a program that could support homeownership supplemental funds.
The only, if I may, the only comment that I would provide on that, and we can build more information into a follow-up later this evening, is I do believe that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency has some homeownership programming that's separate and distinct from Lytech, similar to our down payment assistance program where it's a forgivable loan, sort of a scenario. But how communities access those dollars and what our track record is in Charlotte, I'm not sure.
Right. So I'd like to understand beyond the individual homeowner, what we can do to help incent builders to create for-sale properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Phipps. Thank you. I was wondering about the Marvin Road Apartments project. Is that located in Greer Heights?
I'm not sure, but I bet a staff member can send me an answer to that in just a minute.
It's not.
Thank you.
Okay, so. So, yeah, because I was confused by it because there is a Greer Heights apartment, I mean, a Marvin Road apartment complex there, so I was wondering if that's the same, you know, general area. So, thank you.
All right. Mr. Winston.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I have a couple of questions. Well, number one, Sean Heath replacing Pam Wyman for right now in terms of if people have questions or comments about affordable housing, direct them to Mr. Heath directly, right? So my questions or comments actually have to do, deal with the LISC relationship, and it's something that I didn't catch. If you had mentioned that a couple of months ago, pardon me, because I just caught it just now. There was lots of fanfare back in 2018 and 2019 around this partnership. We in the city put a lot of effort into bringing LISC into town and working on a framework to do this work. So it's kind of disconcerting to hear that they're not part of this round. Some of us on council are advocating for the increase in the commitment of public dollars towards the Housing Trust Fund and affordable housing, but I would just, I just heard considerations from the private sector having their commitment at most. So I believe the community, I know I am going to want to have a conversation about what the status is of this public-private partnership. It seems that, I would think we may want to convene the stakeholders of this public-private partnership. Again, we did this many times in 2018 and 2019. Lots of special meetings with parties and all types of stuff and news conferences and big checks. We should be able to convene those stakeholders to figure out, to clarify how or if we are moving together in step on this problem, in trying to solve this problem or not. Council and the city has continued to evolve the use of Housing Trust Fund dollars, which continues to increase our leverage rate. I think we've been pretty nimble with it over the past few years in figuring out new ways to disperse this. So it would seem that there would, I would think that there would be, bring more opportunities to invest private dollars as well. But again, it seems like they're trying to raise at most half of what they raised in the past. So my question is, have our private and corporate partners deprioritized businesses based on their past commitments and where we're at now? But have they deprioritized their investments into affordable housing throughout our community?
Let me take the first shot at that. I do believe, Councilmember Winston, that they're trying to raise another 50, and 50 is, was the 50 to match the 50 from the last?
But it was a hun, they, they raised $100 million.
They raised around 50 million, but then there was additional vehicles to help us solve this affordable housing issue. So I would just say that it's almost simultaneous that our 50 is running out, just as their 50 is running out, and they're trying to raise another 50. Yes.
So is, will we say it's, it's, it's lessened, it's, their commitment has lessened, it's grown, or it remains the same?
Yeah, I would say that maybe it's good to have Ralphie just come in and brief either a committee or the council, because there's a lot more that LISC is doing in the community than just helping us with affordable housing. So I really would like for her to have an opportunity to talk about what's happened over the course of the last couple of years. I do believe it's been a great partnership.
If I can add, I think that if, you've seen the areas that we focus on corridors of opportunities, being a holistic approach, and that LISC is engaged in that approach as well, and they've adopted that. So along the Beatty's Fort corridor, they're also working. If you remember, one of the debates we had when we brought them on is that they said, well, we do affordable housing, but the place in New York, they had a coffee shop, they had other entrepreneurs and small businesses, and I think that they are still working towards their original model. They did a lot for us with the affordable housing, but I think that they, Ralphie will be much better explaining this, but when we started doing the work over on Five Points, they were full participants.
Yeah, I, and this is why I said LISC and our private and corporate stakeholders as well, because I definitely, I like LISC, and I, you know, I definitely remember all of the portfolio of resources. of the portfolio of resources they have and not all of being deployed yet or necessarily even being considered. So I want to keep that going. Again, my question was really about the commitment of dollars. And we're going to think during this budget process, we're going to have serious conversations, I think, about whether $50 million is the right place for this next municipal bond, that is, public tax dollars, you know, where everybody pays a little bit into it. And that was the big impetus for this $50 million was the private match of dollars to create this public-private partnership, and which we found a partner in LISC to help facilitate that. So when the private community went out, they quickly raised, instead of $50 million, $100 million in the many different vehicles that they could provide that. Now that we are having that conversation around public dollars, I would want to have that same conversation with our private partners to increase, not decrease, the amount that our dollars get leveraged. So that's really where, you know, I want the rubber to hit the road, as one of our colleagues says, around this conversation about, you know, what dollars are we putting on this, not necessarily the capabilities of LISC.
I would like to just add one more thing, and again, I really think it's best for Ralph Inge to come in. Part of bringing LISC in is what LISC could do on their own. So I just want to make sure that part of this deal initially was that LISC would bring its own resources to this community. So think about the first $50 million as the jumpstart, and so there is something that LISC also should be bringing to the community that wasn't here beforehand.
Correct, but I don't, I want to be clear, LISC and our private partners, because this was a private, public-private partnership, and this is something we talk about, I don't want this public-private partnership to be all fanfare at the beginning and then kind of diminish over time. If anything, we need to find ways to broaden this. And I'm kind of concerned with the update that I just received from that. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes? Is this in response?
If I may, I want to quickly correct myself.
Mr. Eggleston, is this in response to Mr. Winston?
Well, I want to, before we go any further, I want to correct an incorrect statement I just made to Mr. Phipps, which is just that I conflated another affordable housing development that is over in the same area. But Mr. Phipps is correct, and this particular thing on Marvin Road is in Greer Heights, and I misstated that.
All right, so Mr. Phipps was correct, as usual. Mr. Phipps, I think, did you want to be rec?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Phipps would like to, all right, Mr. Winston, are you completed your comments? I think that we're going to invite Ralph Inge to come in and talk about the structure and how it worked. Okay. Mr. Phipps?
Thank you.
Go back to you.
Right. Yeah, the Marvin Road Apartments project, is that going to be new construction or is that a NOA?
Yes, it's new construction.
Oh, okay. Great. We had a meeting last week with the Greer Heights community, and they were very concerned about public safety issues in and around that particular Marvin Road area and the current, I guess, apartments there. So this is going to be a replacement for that?
I'm not aware of it being a replacement. It's something I can follow up with you on, though.
Okay. Now, as far as the, you indicated that the expectation will be that these developers of these projects will be, happen to have two meetings within, what, a 30-day period?
I don't know if it's within the 30-day period, but it's a required part of the process, and in fact, I believe we have a deadline of this Wednesday to receive all of the summary reports from the developers as it relates to the two required community input sessions. And that's the sort of thing in the booklet, that if we can't work it in by Wednesday, I'm not sure how these milestones are going to dovetail together, we could provide some supplemental information in advance of the vote if necessary.
So will there be any real expectations from these community meetings in as much as the ones that we require now? In many instances, they would have a community meeting that no one would show up. We saying that we want to see some attendees at these meetings, like from the community?
The requirements are really focused on, of course, having the meetings and following certain protocols in terms of how information regarding the meetings is disseminated via email, mail, engaging community-based organizations, so doing everything that can be done to get the word out, but there isn't a baseline requirement in terms of number of attendees.
Okay, so they could have a meeting, since I've been noticing that nobody would show up, and that would count as a community meeting?
Yes, I believe so.
I remember, I recall attending one of these related types of meetings, and I was the only, I mean, representative there, was no real, no one from the community there. So I find it interesting that it would not be a higher expectation for attendance at these type meetings. Thank you.
And just to follow up on one item I couldn't answer before, so this is not a replacement, it's new construction, but not a replacement. They have had their two required meetings for this particular location, and I'll have to follow up if there's any additional information about the level of participation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A comment and then maybe one question. Thank you, Sean, for the presentation. I think the presentation, as always, is fine, on point, it's targeted, and it's focused in terms of how we're utilizing the Housing Trust dollars over the last 20 years, and certainly the direction that we're going with this set of recommendation kind of fits that criteria for sure. The message is to the community, based on conversations I've been hearing over the last couple of weeks going around town, there is no microwave solution to solving the affordable housing crisis, right? Even if we approve those units next week, they won't come online to 18 to 24 months, 18 at best, right? And that's really, really quick. 24 or more at worst. And so that's just where we are, right? And even what we approved last year is still under construction, right? And so there's no, there's no quick fix solution to how we get out of this, and no matter what you hear, when you go around town listening, it's, I think it's important that we be truthful and tell the community where we are and what we're doing, and the impact that we're making, and the impact that we're making is really, really good under the circumstances of a very, very bad solution. But I hope that we would utilize this 20th anniversary, and we talked about this in the past, and I'll rely on the mayor and the manager to kind of see how we move forward, is to really critique the Housing Trust process, how dollars are awarded, how we use the dollars, how we can be a lot more creative in using the dollars, how we can expand them, and I think that would lead to where Mr. Winston and I think I am in terms of whether or not we need to increase the dollars, right? The $50 million, which supports the Housing Trust Fund. I think we, and I think we need to double it, right? I don't know, but I think we need to back into a number, right? Other than saying Malcolm think we need $100 million or $150 million. That has to be supported by some facts and figures and some studies. So I hope that after we approve this round next week, that we really can put victory of the work and talk about how do we kind of, and she will like this, how do we do a SWOT analysis of the Housing Trust Fund itself, strength, weakness, opportunity, threats? And I always do a small alternative, what can we do different than we've done with the last 20 years, and how do we work our way into a number that makes sense for the community based on community needs, and the needs are great. My concerns are we're still not doing enough for 30% and below, which is probably the hottest targeted area. I get it. So if we can kind of take that into consideration when we kind of do this analysis and how we move forward, we're still not doing enough under home ownership. I wish there's a way we can use those dollars to really kind of spark plug that as well. We talked about land purchasing and to ensure how the city can be a lot more intentional about working with developers on land that we own and on land that we buy and facilitate developments, et cetera. And I just think that it's time that we've kind of, we've talked about it before, I think the time is now to really begin to answer those tough questions and do an evaluation so that when we're sitting here next year, that we're looking at some new rules of the game, new guidelines. I think the meeting with LISC is really appropriate, and so we can know where and if and to what extent we can rely on our private partners. I think that's legitimate. We need them at the table for sure. I know they want to be at the table. I don't think it's a desire that they're backpedaling, I just think, we just need to let them know where we are and ask them how they can come and walk along with us. I think that's really important. Brookhill, I think we've got a scenario in place where we're working with United Way for displacement, if and when that should occur, right? And so, and we just gave them a couple million dollars, like a week ago, two weeks ago, something like that.
For the HomeARP, yeah, correct.
Yeah, so that can kind of help with some of that, too, right?
Well, I mean, to your point, like social surf, for example, and the things we're doing on Housing Navigation, yeah, we have partners.
So I hear your point, but I think for sure, I think it's appropriate that we kind of just make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of if and when that should occur with Mike Griffin and others, that we don't forget about the people there and how we help them and who helped them, and what that community collaboration looks like. So I stand with Councilmember Wallington on that. I am meeting with Mr. Griffin informally to just kind of say, hey, what's up? And I think Sean is going to be with me as well as Tracy, just to kind of say, hey, what's up, right? So we can kind of know who's on first and who's on second, and, you know, what is he, what his goals and objectives are, and, you know, I've read things in the paper that he said, and I just want to make sure that he can fulfill what he said, right? So that's very, very informal. I worked with him in the past, I trust his judgment, but I think that site is really, really important. It's always been important, and it needs to be affordable. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the thing, and those who live there should have an opportunity to come back there. And so those are the things, Mr. Manager, in terms of, so if you can kind of, just give me a comment, if I'm off-base in terms of how we move forward after we approve this round, in terms of kind of taking a look at that process and how we can kind of begin to analyze the, get results that we made over the last 20 years, but more importantly, how we can make it better and do more.
Mr. Graham, I don't disagree with you at all. I was making some notes, and I think it's going to be, what is the priority of this council? Because even in this discussion, we've talked about 30 and below, we've talked about, well, we haven't talked about Works Forks Housing yet, but we will, whether it's multifamily, home ownership, you know, single-family NOAs. And when we started off with the, if you will, the playbook in terms of affordable housing, I don't know what the mix was, it was like 41% in one category, 40 another, and I think 19 was preservation. And I think that's, hopefully, as a community, when we start to think about the 2025 Plan, which is called, what again, Sean?
A Home for All.
A Home for All, that it's more than just this body that's focusing on it, but all of our partners, and if there are some opportunities for a bit of a more of a focus, in some, a larger focus by some of the bodies in a particular area, I think we may get something better outcome than where we are right now. But so I totally agree with you. I think it's time to really take a look at what do you really want the main focus of these funds to be used for.
I think that's really appropriate in terms of the collaboration, and of course, you know, we're working on that together with the city, the county, the private community, and addressing the whole spectrum from homelessness all the way to 80 AMI and all points in between. So I think that that approach works, but I just want to make sure that as a city, we do our due diligence, right, and we kind of, that we take some leadership, as we have done already, in terms of kind of pushing, pulling, cajoling people along with us, and that we just don't get bogged down in bureaucracy, because the issue is really, really complicated, and I just, I just hope we just don't get, we just don't be pushing papers back and forth. That's my only worry.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, I just wanted to push back on something, because I think this council has been very clear about what our priorities are around building housing. One, I think the number one priority from the passage of our Comprehensive 2040 Plan has been that we need more housing of all types in the city. And I think that is clear, and that is, it's not very concise, because it's in hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents. That says it many other different ways. But as for this particular fund, I think we have been, again, very clear. It is to fund as many housing units from 0 to 120% of AMI. And traditionally, we have really kind of focused on the 60 to 80%, and that's what, when I first came on council, that's where was really our sweet spot with this, and we said, no, we have to find, with council, I said over and over again, we have to find ways to hit those other places in 0 to 120. So we looked at NOAs, and we adopted policy that allowed for that. We have said, especially since COVID hit, that we need to do more in the 0 to 30. And we have adopted language that has, hopefully, has been very clear that we want to find more opportunities there. During the comprehensive 2040 Plan process, many council members, including Ms. Wallington, was very, very clear that we wanted to start looking at how do we create home ownership opportunities using the Housing Trust Fund, and I think we have adopted language to do that. So I just want us to be very clear that I, I hope this is not just my remembrance of it, but this council has been very clear where our priorities are. It might be a bit broad, because it's from the 0 to 120, but we want to use the full, which is, again, one of my concerns about the private portion of this, are they keeping up with the way we have been so nimble with this fund, and how clear we have been on where we want to go with this? It shouldn't be gray at this point in time where our priorities are in terms of housing.
I don't disagree. Mr. Winston, I guess what I was saying is that that's exactly what we're doing, and if that's what you'd like for us to continue to do, we will. Is there something that maybe we bring partners in and potentially we focus more so on one area, not abandoning any of them, while we bring our partners along, and they could focus on maybe another area without abandoning anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, can you go back to the map, please? It's kind of difficult for me to see, and really difficult on this slide, but I like when this is presented or, so the public can see and we can see where these, what districts these are approved in. It looks like, and I know you said there weren't any approved in District 6 or 7?
That's correct. There were no proposals for District 6.
No proposals?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's, and I would like to see a table, just so I can, I'm glancing at this, it looks like two in District 4, help me out here, two in District 4, one in District 5, and...
Yes, and I know we don't have it summarized on one slide, but each of the recommended development summary slides has the district associated with the proposal.
Right, but just so, just from a visual comparison, I would like to see that.
Understood.
Because one of the complaints, you know, that we get is we're building affordable housing in, at a despairing... housing in, at a despairing amount in certain districts.
Yes.
And this does kind of show that. So if we can see like a summary, that would be helpful. So there were seven approved, seven approved projects. How many were submitted in total?
Just going to try and move to a different slide.
Oh, sorry.
Did you lock me out enough? Okay, so this is the summary of proposals that were received but not recommended for funding. Yes. So you can see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 distinct proposals.
Okay. I don't know. I would just like to compare like the districts, and we can talk about why they weren't approved. I also wanted to ask, there is some discussion for city-owned land to be a part of some deals we've talked about. Are those projects considered in this proposal?
No, not in this particular one. So going back to February 7th, there were four specific parcels, city-owned land, that were identified and recommended by staff to move forward. And you recall, the approach has been a two-step process. So on that evening, we requested permission, or we made a recommendation, and then at the subsequent business meeting, you approved, basically giving staff the authority to enter into land conveyance negotiations on each of those four. When those negotiations are completed, we will need to bring those back to council, seeking your approval of the conveyance documents. For each of those four, conversations are underway. None of them were submitted as part of this HTF round, but we would certainly expect to see them in a future HTF round.
Okay. So the next proposal, okay.
And ultimately, it'll be up to them to decide when they've pulled together their package and it's ready for an HTF request, but it wouldn't be surprising if we saw them in the next round.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that those numbers or that cap stack wasn't, you know, considered.
Understood.
Okay. One of the things that we've heard from developers who wish to provide more affordable housing is that the permitting fees are so high at the city. You know, I know there's no microwave approach, but that seems something like this council has some authority over its permitting fees, specifically water fees. So, Mr. Jones, I don't know if you've heard that from the community, but can you talk to us about what the process would be to change fees?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. And I think we had this maybe question earlier. There are a number of fees, from water fees, some fees that are related to the county, some fees that are related to the city, and we can stack those for you. I'm not sure that outside, for some of the fees, outside of the general fund absorbing the cost of it, because we've gone through this exercise once before, that maybe there's not a remedy. I know that there are some things that we have done over the course of the last couple of years, so we'll make sure that we'll show you what we have done, call it the low-hanging fruit, and what are the barriers for some of the other fees.
Thank you, yeah. I'd like to see that. And I don't know if that was the previous council, but, you know, I'd like to see that, because we hear that often. And if there's anything that we can do as a city to really increase affordable housing, there's a crisis. There's a real crisis. People can't not afford to live here, and it's getting worse. So, and then when you talk about the 0 to 30%, the last number I heard was a deficit of 20,000 to 30,000? So I don't, I don't know if we have an updated number, but, yeah, there's a crisis. There's a crisis for the 0 to 120, but the 0 to 30%, they're in the hotels. They were in tent city. So if there's anything that we as a city can do, you know, lowering permit fees, I think we can afford to do something. I know we have a AAA rating and all of that, and, you know, that's great, but our citizens are hurting. So I'd like some information on that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Eggleston, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just generally speaking, happy to see these are spread out through most parts of our community, and very happy to see, even if it's in a small way for now, that we are continuing to prioritize opportunities for people to move into homeownership, because we know, obviously, that's how you build long-term, intergenerational wealth. I won't repeat the things that have been said multiple times, but one thing, Sean, if you go back to that map, this is more of a broad thing for maybe the manager to take in, but this appears to be the new council district map. Obviously, from a technical perspective, the new districts don't go into effect until the next council is sworn in, but I think across all departments, we seem to be getting maps, some of which are the old version, some of which are the new version. I guess my ask would be that we just come up with a blanket policy across all city departments, and that when we are being presented with maps, there'd be something in the key for those maps that says, basically indicates whether it's the current map or the future map with a date or something, but we need to be looking at the maps from the same perspective every time until the new council's seated and those districts actually go into effect. So that's kind of a side thought.
I agree, and we'll fix this. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Eggleston, thank you. Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, just to some of our earlier conversation, my understanding is that Litec is in fact a federal program that provides tax credits for the construction of rental housing that is deed restricted. So if we're going to talk to the state, it would have to be in order to access programs other than Litec, right? The state doesn't have the authority to allow us to make any other use of Litec funds than the feds intend.
Yes, Litec is federally funded and state-administered. That's correct.
Right. Okay. So that just affects, you know, what our thinking might be in terms of how we fund other sources, because one of the problems with going outside of Litec is the fact that that is a substantial amount of federal money that leverages these rental structures, and that's why we've done so much of that. So whenever we try to diversify away from Litec, we are talking about having to have, as we saw in this one example, a 50% rate. So I think Litec needs to be a major feature, not that we shouldn't look for other ways to fund, but I'm just saying, when you forego that federal component, you create a huge burden on yourself in terms of how you get to the same mix of public and private funding. The other thing I wanted to mention was, as you go from 60% to 30% AMI, the actual cost per unit roughly quadruples. It doesn't just double. So we need to be clear that we can aspire to create more 30% units, but there will only be half as many of them, because it's just a fact of life that, actually, it can quadruple, yeah, it can quadruple. And that's my point. The ratio of the AMIs is not the ratio of the cost. It's actually, if you take a $1,300 unit, it takes $700 to get a 30% AMI household into that unit. It takes $175 to get a 60% AMI unit into that unit. So it is, again, not that we can't do it, but I'm just pointing out, it's very expensive. And you get a quarter of the number of units for the same amount of money when you're targeting 30%. So I think our goal of having a mix is the right way to go. There are different needs at different tiers. One thing we did see in past studies was that at the 80% level, there isn't actually much of a shortage. At least, that's what some research showed. And therefore, we should be very focused on the 60% and below, but just recognize that trying to get down lower than that can quadruple the cost per unit. The last thing, Sean, a question, the cost escalation environment right now is really messing up. A lot of projects, I was hearing about staggering increases related to Valentine Reimagined. So are these deals that you just described to us kind of locked in, or can there be a situation where because of cost increases, we have to revisit the terms?
I think, and I'll ask for confirmation from staff while I'm answering this, but I think consistent with prior practice, that once we enter into the agreement, we're locked in, consistent with the Housing Trust Fund deals that we've approved over the last few years. But clearly, there's cost pressures right now. You know, we're seeing some evidence of that in the proposals that were put forward here, and it's putting a strain on the need for gap funding, no question about it.
But I mean, are the parties with whom we enter into these agreements bound at some point by a number? Or can we find ourselves in a position where the structure we had in mind proves to be unworkable, and then they can come back to us and say, I'm sorry, I need more money, or I can't do it?
I'll follow up with an answer on that one.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Driggs. This has been a great conversation. Oh, Ms. Ashmira, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a couple of points. I know one of my colleagues had asked about the land banking, and I understand that is something that we need to work on. I just want to make sure that is, that funding is not coming out of our $50 million housing bond referendum, because the need is today. And we, you know, even Mr. Graham said this, it takes 18 to 24 months for some of these developments to get completed. So what pool of funding should we be looking at when we are considering land banking?
So we don't currently have any land banking scenarios built into the Housing Trust Fund recommendations. I mean, the Housing Trust Fund can be leveraged for that purpose, but that's not something that's referenced in our recommendations here. I think that Economic Director Dotson has made some references in the Corridor's work that she's doing in direct relation to purchasing land for various purposes, possibly for affordable housing, but there's nothing of direct relevance to these recommendations here this evening on that.
Thank you. I think we do need just a separate conversation on land banking and the strategies and tools that we have at our disposal to start planning ahead. My next question here is, can you, Sean, could you go back to the slide where you got the criteria? So I know one of my colleagues have raised this earlier, and thank you so much for this 20-year anniversary report that talks about how many units we have been able to build or deliver through this Affordable Housing Bond referendum, and how many, how many units we have done at each AMI level, 0 to 30, 30 to 60, and above. This is really useful information, and it helps us, when we talk to community, it helps us point to specific development that council had approved or it's in the works right now. So after reviewing this report, I already knew that we don't have enough affordable housing in all parts of our city, and we have seen that over and over again as we are considering more proposals that come in for an approval, where it's, some of this affordable housing is concentrated in a couple of districts. And I understand that dirt is expensive, and it takes a lot more money to build in certain parts of our city. However, if you're truly serious about upward mobility and tackling that issue, we got to consider schools and great schools in our equation. So when we look at this criteria, not this slide, maybe the slide where you got the access, you got jobs, yeah, this is it. So where you got the scoring criteria, I think we got to consider areas with great schools that people can have an access to, because we are trying to also address the social equity here. But I think that's a decision that we as a council have to make, knowing that it will cost a lot more money to build in District 6 and District 7 because of the cost of dirt, but if that's something council wants to tackle and provide options for affordable housing in all parts, we need to add that into our, one of our criterias. So I would like to hear from Committee Chairwoman, Ms. Wallington, on her thoughts, and if this is something that's been considered, or having, or if this is something being discussed.
Ms. Wallington?
I'm not sure I totally understand exactly what you want to know.
Yes. Okay. So what I'm trying to get to is, when we are looking at the scoring criteria, we are looking at all these four things, right? But in access, under access, are we, should we consider great schools, and should we consider areas where we don't have access to affordable housing, specifically in District 6 and District 7, as it's clearly reported in this 20-year anniversary presentation where it shows that certain parts of our city, there is very little affordable housing? So has committee considered, and I know I had raised this, and so did Mr. Graham earlier, I think it was last year, where we had talked about considering providing affordable housing in other parts?
Gotcha.
So, yeah, what I'm trying to understand, are we looking at revising the criteria based on some of this feedback that you have heard today?
Sure. So right now, there's not a current referral to the committee to revise the housing location policy since 2019. I did remember the last time that I asked the question in regards to what constituted amenities, schools were mentioned. However, based on this conversation last night, and even just as we talk about how to get the most out of our money in light of the 2040 Plan, I absolutely am open to taking another look at how we can adjust our housing and locational policy to get more in line with what we're saying that our goals are, but currently, it's not a referral.
So yes, I would like council to consider this. We have mentioned this many, many times, and every time we have a affordable housing proposal in front of us, we all talk about how it's just the same area. You know, we don't really have an access to affordable housing in certain parts of our city. So then let's just, let's make that referral to the committee, so that committee can do the work and bring it forward, and maybe at the end of the day, after doing the work, where if we consider the cost, instead of building 4,000, if we might end up only building 1,000 units, that's something council ought to consider. But at least we need to have some data. We need to look at what kind of number, what kind of impact it will have on number of units for us to add that to one of our criteria. We at least got to look at that.
Thank you, Ms. Ashmira. This has been a valuable, I'm sorry. Mr. Bakari?
Thank you.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes. Yes?
For comment?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Let me just start by thanking staff, and particularly, you know, Pam Weidman, who's no longer with us, but had a big part of the last, of this anniversary of 20 years, and everyone who's picked up the work from there. Great job by you guys executing on what we've laid out for you to date. I think my comments, though, would be more broad in that what's on us, the council right now, is a situation where I think, I think we need to recognize that what we're setting out to do, we're not succeeding right now. In fact, we're failing, and we've, you know, we've spent $210 million over the last two decades, and we've just gotten over 10,000 affordable units in place. In the last five years, record-breaking, $100 million spent, just over 4,000 units. Yet, we're still at a spot where, depending on how you calculate it, the crisis, and it is indeed a crisis, is still between 25,000 and 35,000 units. There are 25,000 to 35,000 more people that live in Charlotte than there are units that they could reasonably afford to live here. So I just think, you know, we've talked about this for the last five years, and I have mentioned it every year, yet I've gone along and supported record-breaking spends, and I think this could be the cycle, this needs to be the cycle, where we as council step back here and reevaluate our strategy, because you could quadruple the record-breaking amounts we've been spending in the last four years, every single year, and we're still only treading water. only treading water. The numbers are only going up every single year, and we're not even calculating NOA's and things like that every year. So, I just, this is, this is not, affordable housing is not the topic. It is not the goal that we're shooting for. It is a tool of one of many towards upward mobility, towards sustainability and living in this community. And we continue to act and treat it like it's ultimately the goal, the outcome. And we can't claim victory looking back at these numbers when we look at the ultimate measures of success. So, whether it's items that have been mentioned tonight of, you know, let's get serious about looking at the 30% estimated overhead that our zoning and permitting processes add to the cost of housing, that's going to make a bigger dent if we all got really serious about that than any amount of money that we continue to throw at it in bonds. The homeownership conversation is a great start, and we should have been doing this longer. But again, that's just a tool. We need more focus there. The ultimate answer lies with wraparound services, transportation, and workforce development. It goes back to five years ago, when I first joined the council, when I started talking about the difference between vertical organizations inside the city, Mr. Manager, and horizontal, where everyone is tied to an outcome across all departments. And I just, I think this is the point where, you know, we must do something different if we're going to be serious about what the actual objective here is, sustainable living and upward mobility. And if we're contemplating doubling, tripling, quadrupling this money, we're still only treading water, and we're doing a disservice to the ultimate outcome that's necessary. So, my deepest hope right now is that we get serious and start doing things like, you know, not just using third-grade reading levels to determine, you know, what, what kind of beds we need in our jail facilities, but we start using third-grade reading levels to determine how much we're investing in the workforce programs that are going to be there and ready and waiting. And then ultimately, we can get away from affordable housing as it relates to, like, investing in land. I take all comers in District 6 for affordable housing projects, and I will champion any of them that make any sense. The problem is, they just can't make sense. The land prices are too high. And if we want to say, "All right, well, 4,000 is what we've done with record-breaking numbers over the last five years, but we'd be willing to do 1,000 in District 6," I'm not allergic to that whatsoever. I just think that's a shame that we would, that we would allow ourselves to even stop treading water and start sinking. So, I really do hope that we can think out of the box right now if we really want to make a difference in this very cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Bakari. As I said, this is a valuable conversation, because I believe that we have spent more than an hour talking about something that's recapping what we've been doing for the last 20 years, when we really have to start looking at what's going forward. And a couple of things I'm going to ask Sean to add to your plate, and I hope that you will be okay with this and be able to provide it. I think we ought to have the status of all of the projects that we've looked at since 2018, because many of them have had these funds, and they've not been able to get the dirt moved. And I'd like to hear why, and is there something that's solvable for it?
Well, this has been since 2018, and I agree. It is a lot about the costs. The other thing that I'd like to say is, across this country, affordable housing, and Mayor Protim and I have talked about this a lot, if you listen to any expert in this field, it started in 2008 when people stopped building houses at all. So, all of this, when they had the housing market crash, things have changed, and they just did not, or we did not, as a country, invest in people having housing. And the way, and I think Mr. Bakari is right in this respect, we're building housing without the idea of how do we change some of the lives that are in the housing that we have now. And that has a lot to do with how the Housing Authority or Enlivian has worked with, under the federal policies. You know, I would like to agree with Mr. Graham, Mr. Bakari, and the city manager, that this conversation is way deeper than what we can have on a monthly basis. We started this effort with a housing summit, Affordable Housing Summit, that we invited people from across the city to come into a room and talk about what would work best for us. And I think it's time to do something different, and to do that in a way, to hear from the best minds about this thinking and what we could do. If it is transportation and better schools, how do we make that happen? If it's not that, and we still have to build housing, I think we'll always probably have that part of what we have to do. But I have listed here over 10 action steps, 10, just from this conversation tonight. I've also heard, you know, how we need to change things. It's been said that if we want to do 30%, we have to do NOAs. But yet, we want to put people in home ownership. There is a spectrum of choices that we have to make, and somehow, we have to land somewhere. Sean, I'd like to see actually a list of what you consider our housing policies to be. We have jumped so quickly and so fast in the four years, that we've been kind of doing it on the fly in good results, and in the right way, with the best intentions. But maybe that's not what works for us now. And for us all to be able to signal what these policies are in a way that's simple, that we can communicate to the public, is so very important. But more importantly, this engagement by the public to say and understand how difficult this task is. It is a very difficult task, and what tools are best for this community to take place. And there's no wrong answer. It's all going to be good things to be done. But if we're going to actually make a step forward, I would say that this effort of getting the right people in the room and having some data and a conversation would make a huge difference and help us prioritize what we're doing and what's important to the community today, not what was in 2018, or 2005 when we started, or whatever. We've been doing this a while, and there are lots of players in it. But the manager's right, some players will never want to do under 30. Some people will only want to do, you know, NOAs, and that's a good thing. So, how do we peel back where our partnerships are? How do they get them done? That means we have to invite them into the room. And having this discussion on another night is just not getting us moving in the right direction. I know that we've talked about a lot of things today, and we still have more to talk about tonight. But if we really know and understand the character of our neighborhood is based upon the quality of life for all, we need to go ahead and set aside a date and a time to engage on what we see as our current future, our future from our current state in affordable housing for this community. And I would propose that we do that as soon as we can and as soon as possible. We've got the NEST committee out here, working right now. You know, if we stopped evictions, would that be enough? What would that add if we actually took evictions off of people's records? How many housing units could we save by then? If we do less, you know, don't charge for the general fund subsidizes permitting, what would that mean? How many housing units would that free up? We've got to build this as a building block and find out what the data is to help us actually change the direction that we're going in. So, I would suggest, and agree with the city manager and Mr. Graham and Mr. Bakari, that we should have a housing summit, that we actually talk about setting the goals for the next five years. So, I hope that we will be able to do that, and I hope that there's some agreement. I see people nodding their heads.
Mayor Lyles?
Yes.
Can I just make one recommendation? Just, I think you're in the right direction on this. I think that the problem is, when we enter these things, a lot of times, we enter with an affordable housing-only lens. And I think maybe we call it sustainable housing, sustainable living in our city, but we don't, we don't limit our scope to just saying, "How can we get more money and get more affordable units at certain percentage levels built?" But we activate the Economic Development Department, we activate the Transportation Department, we activate private sectors and training. And that way, we can ultimately come at this from all angles, permitting, right, zoning, and the expenses around there. I think it has to be a complete solution. And aside from that point, I think you're pointed in a very good direction.
You can call it whatever it needs to be called, because I agree that it is about having people have the ability to have enough of an opportunity to get a decent-paying job that they can afford where we're living. So, that's the ultimate goal. I guess what I'm saying is that we've got to devote the time to get the right people and the right data, so that we can make better choices about this, because it isn't going to be easy to change what we're doing. I'm sorry, let me put it this way. I did not say that well. What I mean is, we can continue to do what we're doing and not get the best result, and at the same time, we're going to have to continue what we're doing, because people are hurting. And they're not being able to live in our city right now, so we've got both tracks to do. I understand sometimes it's difficult to say, "Well, we're going to continue this and do something new," but we have no choice on something like this. I was in DC at the Housing
Madam Mayor?
I'm going to do one other thing. I spoke with their housing director. They're putting $500 million. They're a city smaller than we are. They're a wealthier city than we are. $500 million into housing this year, 500 million. They do subsidies, they do all kinds of things, and that's on top of 500 million that they did last year. That is not changing the environment for people. That is basically keeping people where they are. And we do better than that. We change the environment for people. We change people's lives for quality of life. And I think that's how we started with that goal, and if we keep that goal in mind, I think we'll be in good shape. Okay, Ms. Watlington?
Just wanted to add one thing to what Councilmember Bakari said. I think as we're talking about stakeholders and taking a holistic approach, we have to consider the broader region, because the fact of the matter is, we continue to recruit high-salary jobs here. We've got to think about not only what's within Charlotte City limits, but how does that impact our surrounding communities, and what does that mean as it relates to transit? If the answer is, hey, we can have so many units in the city of Charlotte, but we need to partner with our surrounding counties to be able to think about, how do we invest in jobs and residents around those jobs, and how do we support our transportation to do so? We've got to have this conversation as a broader region. I think it has to go beyond the city limits.
You're exactly right. All right. With that, I think it's, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Okay. It's great, it's a great discussion, and I, and I agree with the Housing Summit or the Economic Summit. But I wanted to follow up and ask about Ms. Watlington's request or for a referral to the committee. Can we move forward to referring that to the committee to take a look at that policy, as well as thinking, you know, about the future? We have data, and we, there's been a lot of talk about the needs. So, I think that we can, again, manage for the present while leading for the future. I think there's a way to do both. So, I agree with you, you know, getting the community partners together and having a meeting for the future. But I think that referral to take a look at our policies would be something that we can do right now. There are some ways to look at our tax credit or this credit, or this policy from a equitable position. I was surprised to hear that there were not any proposals for District 6 or 7, and that's probably because of the cost. So, maybe if we're taking a look at incentivizing developers who are willing to develop in Area 6 and 7, maybe lowering those permitting fees, or the water fees or something, incentivizing them so that, you know, that individuals have access to better school, or different schools, and we're looking at it from an equitable perspective. So, I know there was a request to move that, this forward to the Great Neighborhoods Committee, and I wanted to know what was, if that was going to happen. Mayor?
I also had the request for land banking, a request on the 30%. I have a list of about 10 things that people talked about. What I'd like to do is actually talk to the committee chair and figure out what things are most important to get done and be accountable for out of this list of what we've asked them to do. We've also asked for additional data around some things that I don't think that we have right now, you know, like, there was a discussion about the policy on Brookhill and the processes and whatever for relocation. I, so my suggestion would be, and I, I'm sorry, Ms. Watlington walked out of the room, is to say to the committee, and I believe the vice chair is here, here are the 10 things that I have, and you may have additional ones, and please send them to me, that were suggested in more detail that you would like to see, and let the committee prioritize the things that make the most difference, even with, including the NEST Commission, which we put people on to come back and bring us some of these recommendations as well. That would be my suggestion, Ms. Johnson. So, with that, Mr. Graham?
No, I was just going to comment, and I'll share, Victoria, the conversation that she missed. But I just want to reiterate that I think everyone understands the urgency of now. But I go back, what I said earlier, there's just no quick fix. And I think the mayor is right in terms of, we got a number of moving parts focusing on different, the manager talked about a home for all, we talked about the NEST Commission, we talked about the housing trust fund in this 20 anniversary. So, there's a whole lot of moving parts. I think there's some, Bakari made a couple of great points. I think synergy is what we need to achieve, right? And making sure that we understand who's on first, who's on second, who's doing what, what our partners are willing to do and when. And we don't want to have our hands tied by waiting, right? So, I think there's really some, some, I think that really makes
Some mapping.
Yeah.
I need some mapping.
Makes a lot of sense.
With that, we're going to move on to our next item. I believe Mr. Jones is, Sean still up for American Rescue Plan update?
Kick us off, yes.
Okay. All right. You're going to kick us off, Sean. Not that you've been spending enough time.
I'll be very brief, and then I'm going to turn it over to the expert. Quickly, on the American Rescue Plan, on December 6th, we had a color-coded sheet of paper which showed for the ARPA Phase 1 installment that was received last year, $71 million in May of 2021. We came to an agreement that the best way to move these opportunities forward was to recognize that staff would first ideate and then move into design, and then, once we had gotten comfortable that we had a design that was ready for council discussion, we'd bring it into the room for feedback and discussion. And then ultimately, the only way that dollars would be spent would be through a council vote. So, we've been working on the digital inclusion recommendation. You'll recall from early on, there were, these were just earmarks, but there was a $10 million earmark associated with digital inclusion. That's 10 million as part of the overall $71 million. So, Renee Askew and team have been hard at work to develop an investment strategy associated with the $10 million. You'll recall references in the past as it relates to digital inclusion, focusing generically on internet access, device access, digital literacy as the three main stools in support of that. So, our chief information officer and head of INT, Renee Askew, is going to provide a great update on the recommendations associated with this investment opportunity, and then I'll join for Q and A as needed.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, everyone. I would say good morning. I felt like I've been sitting there till morning. Today, I'd like to just walk through the plan as we've just planned out, talked about. We've met with local organizations, city staff, and Councilmember Winston and Bakari, Councilmember Bakari also, as we tried to determine what is the best approach to move forward with the digital inclusion efforts with the city. So, the plan has been, you know, really divided into certain segments, and we go to the next slide, please. Just to frame it up a little bit, so, some of the statistics from 2019 actually shows that there were 51, over 51,000 households without computers or laptops of any kind. And so, that's a big number. And then, when you look at, over 66,000 of our households had no internet, no broadband at all. And so, that is a huge opportunity for us as a city to help bridge that gap. And so, what we're talking about here, and what I'll outline, is how we recommend or propose leveraging the $10 million of ARPA funds over a three-year period to help bridge that gap. Next slide, please. So, same information, just a different lens. And so, this map lens is from the North Carolina Broadband Adoption Index, and it's dated from 2019. That's the latest that we have. And it's designed to show us, if you look at the pink shading, those are the areas that have a low adoption score. And so, the low adoption is not because of the availability of internet access, because it's available. 99% of Mecklenburg County has the ability, has access to internet. But the ability to afford the service and really use the service is lower in those pink-shaded areas. So, that demonstrates the gap that we want to focus on. And so, if you look at the gap between the availability of internet and then the adoption of internet, that's going to be our target. And if you think about internet as a necessity from a utility perspective, we have the opportunity in front of us to make a difference. Next slide, please. So, who will benefit from this investment? So who will benefit from this investment? So when we're talking about digital inclusion, we took a step back and said, okay, who are the various personas, the various types of organism... Individuals who would benefit from this service? So you have families, individuals, you have housing insecurities, so those who are displaced and would need access. You have seniors, think about staying in place, youth, and of course, the general population. So here, we tried to outline, if you look at the various individuals and the services and the ways they can use Internet access provided, and how we could help in the various efforts, whether it be through advancements in technology, whether it be in training and education, when you look at the adoption, leveraging Digital Navigators Program. And I'll talk about all of this as we walk through. But this is just a glance to help you see if we're looking at it by persona, by individual or segment, how people could benefit from access. Next slide, please. So just to take you back to CARES, the CARES Act funding. So if you remember, you approved the ability for us to use 3.250 funding of CARES to actually implement public Wi-Fi and Wi-Fi to residential neighborhoods back in 2019... Excuse me, 2020, 2021. And through the CARES Act funding, we were able to stand up 1,800, over 1,800 households with broadband access. And that represented 14 multifamily communities, four public spaces, and also some community centers along the way. And so the goal here was, how do we get access to as many communities as possible with the $3 million that was available to us? The Digital Navigators Program was also an opportunity to say, okay, so we have access, but how do you use it? How do you get connected? Where are the resources available to assist? And so between the Digital Navigators Program, which is a program that is offered through Queen's University, and our own 3-1-1 resources, we were able to create a framework where our residents can call in to 3-1-1 and get directed to someone who can help them. And so that was huge, and it was just an opportunity for us to build the foundation that we want to build on as we move forward. But in addition, we had partners who were also doing very similar things. We had the library who stood up 800 single-family homes. We had our CATS buses, and I believe there were approximately 200 CATS buses outfitted with public Wi-Fi. So free Wi-Fi. You get on the bus, you can connect to Wi-Fi and be able to do your homework or whatever work while you're on the buses. But also, Enlivian implemented 877 wired Internet connections within the community and funded it for one year. So as we move forward and we talk about how we build upon this foundation, I believe there's an opportunity in front of us to now look at, how do we support over 18,000 households in Phase 2? Next slide, please. So at a glance, I think it's important for us to put side by side what we've... Were able to accomplish with CARES funding compared to what we're wanting to do with the newly available ARPA fundings if they are approved. And as you can see from the chart here, the foundation of what we're trying to do in the community rests on Internet connection. So yes, we're also supporting digital literacy and adoption. We're also looking at, how do we stand up learning labs? But the foundation of what we're trying to implement and the majority of the funding will go to Internet access and connectivity. And I'll talk through this in a little more detail. So let's go to the next slide. Phase 2. Okay, so when we're talking about expanding Access Charlotte, Phase 2 of Access Charlotte, Phase 1, we leveraged CARES funding, and that allowed us to activate over 1,800 homes. Access Charlotte Phase 2 is about $5.9 million, and we're working towards that $10 million number, and I'll show that to you as we go along. But when we're talking about access, focusing on access, we're looking at investing another $5.9 million in access. A portion of that is supporting what's currently in place. And so with CARES funding, that's satisfied one year of service, and we're wanting to make sure that we can continue that perpetually until 2024. That gives opportunity for us to gain a lot of learnings. It gives opportunity for people to identify other ways and other sources and other means to continue those services. And also, the metrics is going to be very valuable to us as we learn more throughout the process. So here, we're looking at, again, additional, supporting the multifamily homes that are already in place. If you remember from the prior slide, we talked about the library. I think there was about 800 homes. We talked about Enlivian. There was another 877 homes. And so those were funded for one year. We're going to pick that up as part of our investment, proposing pick that up as part of our investment with the ARPA funds. But what is new is the expansion. And so we're looking at expanding to approximately 8,000 homes. And we say approximately because we're leveraging ARPA funds. We need to go bid. We need to find a provider, and that provider can help us identify exactly how many homes we can reach. But based upon the estimates we used from Phase 1, we're looking at about 8,000 households. And so through that, we can leverage our partners. So we've been talking here today about our partners, Dream Key, Enlivian. We have our own Housing and Neighborhood Services, who helps us to identify where are the best places and opportunities for us to implement public Wi-Fi and Wi-Fi to the home. And so we're going to continue to leverage those sources. We're also going to continue to leverage our private partners, those private partners that own some of these properties in the qualified communities. And again, as opportunity avails itself, we're going to expand our public space utilization, public space Wi-Fi. And again, we're looking at access as foundation to everything else. Next slide, please. So digital literacy and adoption investment, $1.6 million. So we have access. We've brought access to the home. We need to help train people, onboard people, make sure that there's a campaign for people to understand the service is available, the service, what it provides them, how to connect with the community and organizations involved in training and development, education on the safest way to surf the Internet, Jesus as an example. And so what we also want to do, we talked about 8,000 households. We want to stand up with Wi-Fi to the home. We also want to support about 10,000 additional households to get them signed up to the affordable... I always get messed up with the name of this, because it used to be EBB, and now it's ACP, Affordable Connectivity Program. It's a federal program that will sponsor about $30 a month for an individual for the next three years to get signed up and have access. So we're targeting 10,000 homes. And what we'd like to do is leverage our community partners to assist with doing that. And so there, we're ready, as soon as we can get approval, we're ready to start that process to get people connected. There is a process, there is paperwork, and we're leveraging our partners to help us get that done. And that's on the Digital Navigators. We'd also like to determine, are there tools? Are there... Is there community information that we could share? Is there an opportunity to develop tools and technology to help people get greater access to some of the services that are available? And then lastly, we have to manage it. So that's what the contract support is. We have to manage this. This is going to be a lot of solicitations, a lot of administration over the next three years, and we'd like to make sure we have some support onboard to do that. Next slide. So we've been talking about the here, the now, what's in front of us today, trying to meet the immediate needs, and that's through trying to activate 18,000 residents, 8,000 with direct household access, another 10,000 signed up with ACP, and get them moving forward. But we also want to be future-minded. We want... Also want to be thinking future-forward, thinking about innovative technology. And so we'd like to earmark $2.5 million for that effort. So we would be able to come back later on, after we've identified exactly how that $2.5 million would be utilized, and we'd say, okay, is it going to be for 5G devices? Is it going to be for upward mobility and educational programs for residents who desire to go through those programs? How would we leverage the $2.5 million? But we recognize that there is a clock, and we recognize this fund is not available for us forever. And so we want to make these decisions as quickly as possible on what the Phase 3, $2.5 million will go for. But in support of what we've continued to talk about here, we're going to use it for access, for adoption, and for devices. And so we will continue to do that, even with the $2.5, but we want to make the smartest investment with the dollars that's future-forward. And so what I've talked about here is, again, staying consistent with the plan as we've outlined it initially, starting with Phase 1. Phase 2 is standing up additional households. Phase 3 is future-forward, thinking about emerging technology and how we can get our residents moving forward with emerging technology. And so as we close, I hope that I've given you an understanding of how we're targeting leveraging that investment. And if I remember the process correctly, the presentation is today, but we have to come back later for a vote, if I'm understanding the process correctly. Questions? Next slide, please.
That's probably the first step in the process, questions, right? Renee, thank you for this work. I know that the partners that we have in this community are ready to support many of these efforts, and your leadership and guidance has been amazing for this kind of effort, what you do with CARES money and how we move forward. So let's see, any... Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted to say thank you, Renee. Great leadership. That's all.
You're welcome.
I just like saying that.
So if there are no questions, this will be on the agenda for the... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Winston?
Thank you. I think it's correct. It's only on the agenda for information right now. But I have been making calls along with Mr. Bakari. I think this is ready for to go. This money has been sitting on the sidelines, and our people need it. So with that said, I'd like to ask for... Make a motion for unanimous consent to move this process forward. Second?
All right, we have a motion. I don't think it's a motion. I think it's just a decision whether or not it would be unanimous tonight.
To vote.
To vote, yes. So all in favor of a unanimous... Of course, all in favor of unanimous. Maybe we just skip the vote. All in favor of having the vote tonight. The only question I would have is public comment, where people are able to sign up on the agenda to speak to an item for engagement. I don't know if this is something that warrants that or not on Monday, but it's up to you. I just think that would be the question, because usually, we have the public comment and things like that. But all in favor... If you would like to approve the vote tonight, just raise your hand.
I would imagine. I think it's virtual, so you would have to go around, but...
Do a roll call. That's true. We have to do... All right. It is virtual, yes.
Mayor, I would just make a comment.
Uh-huh.
To your point, I agree with your point, but I would just, in terms of the ability to have public input, these are issues that have been on the agenda in the past in terms of how we use ARPA dollars. This is a re-up of things that have already been on the public record, and staff... We've had enormous amounts of conversations around the process, around ARPA dollars. And this is really the staff coming back to us, being responsive to council to say, hey, we appreciate what we were doing, but we need to be able to kind of scrub this more. And that's what has been done. So I do feel comfortable holding the vote tonight, even given your very legitimate concern. Just wanted to put that on the record.
All right. All right, the roll call vote. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
She's no longer on the line.
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
And I think I know how Mr. Winston will vote, but please, for the record.
Absolutely.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan update on the digital divide?
So moved. Second?
All right. I'm assuming since everyone was unanimously voting for it, putting it on the agenda, we would have to roll call again, but we can go quickly. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira is not here. Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
All right, the last item on our agenda is the city code update, and I think that I would turn it over to the manager.
So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Renee. That was a very strong endorsement of your work. Thank you.
It's not me, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Baker, the city... I'm sorry, Mr. Baker. I'm just looking at the clock. It's 8:20, 28. Mr. Baker.
I was going to let the manager do it. I was actually...
All right. Mr. Baker, would you lead us off, please?
I will, I will. Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, we have, in light of the basketball game tonight, we have the Elite Eight, the final eight.
Really? Good point, Mr. Baker.
I'm sorry. These are the ordinances. As I've mentioned to you, the attorney's office and the administration have been working on this for several months, going through the code meticulously to identify which of the ordinances that we have should remain with the ability to criminally enforce. You approved a batch of ordinances at your last meeting. There were some questions about these eight, and we have provided answers, justifications for you. And I'm happy to walk you through those answers. I think the answers are all fairly self-explanatory. And the staff, by that, I mean the administration folks from CNPD, the airport, and housing are, in my understanding, available to answer any further questions that you have on this. At this stage, from the attorney's perspective, I think we're at the stage where we need to just hand this off to the council. And basically, you have the proposed ordinance changes to make these final eight ordinances enforceable criminally, and again, by criminal enforcement. We're talking about Class 3 misdemeanor, essentially the lowest level of criminal enforcement that we... That exists in the books. So take any questions, and happy to read anything into the record that you'd like.
Are there any questions on the city attorney's report on... Why don't we just go through them very quickly? Restore criminal enforcement for the remaining sections. Aviation, dance halls, public health, news... It says railroads, camping, youth protection, and carnivals. Ms. Johnson?
Last week, I believe, when we discussed this, we talked about a slide for the public. Is there any visual presentation tonight?
There should be. I have a slide in front of me. I don't know if it's been uploaded to the group, and that's the PowerPoint that I provided to you all last week.
Did we get the PowerPoint up? It's just, I think, I don't know where it went. Okay, there it is.
There it is. So page 1 is the listing of the actual eight remaining ordinances that have been recommended for criminal enforcement, the continuation of criminal enforcement going forward.
Okay. We also have them in our book. Ms. Johnson, do you have any questions?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Was there going to be a presentation by CNPD about when these will be considered civil and when they would be considered criminal? Thank you. One of the things that we're concerned about, and we've talked about, is subjectivity of who or when someone will be charged with a criminal offense versus civil. And I know we've talked about Mr. Baker, that, you know, if there's another charge, if they're playing loud music while committing another crime, well, there's the crime. So do we have... I thought there was going to be some more presentation as far as from CNPD about why these charges...
There is. He is coming, deputy...
Good, I'm sure. It's coming in now. Why these charges were selected, and is there any objectivity of when they would be considered criminal versus civil? The goal is to take the disparity. The goal is to take the disparity out of the charges for communities of color, or we're just trying to really have some equity and... Just make sure that it's fair and equally distributed. So that's what -- those are the questions. Like, what's the justification, or when would playing music or lauding about on a railroad property, or camping, or other prohibited on public property, when would that be criminal versus civil?
Well, officers always have discretion. It just depends on a litany of circumstances that we engage. Some examples or some circumstances could be the number of times we deal with an individual, the number of times we're out in that particular area, if we get personal complaints, or if we get calls for service, repeated calls for service, if there's other crimes that occur as a result of bringing us out there in the first place. But all these ordinances had been and have been in effect for a long time. They're a tool, so it gives us a reason to engage people. Typically, it's out of voluntary compliance. However, there's, like I said, a litany of circumstances on whether or not someone's actually charged or not.
So a number of times, it's kind of just the officer's discretion, basically, right?
There is a discretion component, but like I said, the methodology an officer would use would be based off of particular issues in that neighborhood, community concerns, engagement with an individual on multiple occasions, compliance, things like that that they use to formulate some logic behind whether or not enforcement's appropriate. The approach initially is always voluntary compliance. That's what the strategy is in the first place, and if that's not achieved, then there's a remedy through legal recourse, which could be up to misdemeanor charge.
So when you talk about the methodology, is that in writing somewhere?
It's in our training.
But is it in writing for the public? No, I just believe that the reason that these ordinance were presented, an opportunity to change and decriminalize, was to -- for an attempt for equity and to remove subjectivity, if there were any -- yeah, you know, just for communities of color, and just my understanding is some attempt for criminal justice reform. And so if there's an option for civil versus criminal, I want to know what makes the difference, or how will a person know that this is being applied fairly?
So the option is voluntary compliance. That's our objective. Our objective is voluntary compliance. The remedy and application could be up to a misdemeanor. It depends on the compliance we receive from the individual that we're either called out there, or the reason why we're there out there in the first place. Taking objectivity away from the police, there is no exact formula for application. There's a litany of factors that could be placed in why someone's charged. And so that's part of the legal process. It's part of our training. CNPD has always been embraced with trying to be, you know, part of that application of the law is discretion, but also voluntary compliance. We try to get people to comply long before we ever apply a legal standard to it, unless we're compelled to. Those are domestic violence and other types of charges that state law requires us.
So I would, and we can -- I would like to see if there was something in writing on when this could be, like those things that you just said. If the person did not comply, or if they, if this was the -- they had been called out multiple times, then it can be a criminal offense. I think that that puts some standards and some equitable standards to make sure that it's applied. Fairly, just a second, please. So that's what I think that, and I think, I know we've talked about that, Patrick. So I'd like to, I've asked numerous times, what's the objectivity? If the music is being played loud and there's another crime being committed, well, then that's the crime. But to have the, some people can be charged civil and some people can be charged criminally. I just don't want to open up that, any unfair or disparity in treatment or application. So I don't know if there are some baselines, or some benchmarks, that when it would be criminal versus civil, but I think that this choice for it to be civil versus criminal really opens us up to really be careful in when the outcome or the charge is, how it's resolved. So, thank you.
Mr. Winston, followed by Mr. Phipps.
Yeah, so I kind of, I think I kind of agree with what Ms. Johnson was going, you know. The deputy chiefs, I think rightly said that there are litany of circumstances that result, you know, in whatever outcome it is once CNPD is called. But I do think there needs to be a particular circumstance needed to kind of criminalize a person under city code, and it is that that action will make the community safer. And I think we know that that's not always the case when we criminalize. I think there are a couple of examples of this. In 2012, before the DNC and after Occupy Charlotte movement occurred, city council was told that we need to invoke extraordinary events ordinance, because that could be used to keep us safer. Well, that wasn't enforced criminally until Sunday, September 26 of 2016. I was the first person arrested under the extraordinary events ordinance. I was detained for about half an hour, maybe 40 minutes, on South Graham Street, where the police stopped me, and I complied with them for a very long time. It's all on Facebook. You can go and check it out. But I was not given those situations to further comply. I was arrested and charged with the possession of a gas mask with the intent to disobey the lawful order of a law enforcement officer in an extraordinary zone. I had several court dates for that, had to get a lawyer. One of those court dates, my arresting officer told my lawyer that CNPD staff outside, you know, in headquarters had been watching the video. I was walking around on a Sunday by myself at 11 o'clock in the morning, and they told them to use the extraordinary events ordinance to come and get me, because I was leader in the movement. That charge was eventually dismissed after several court dates, and the city council in 2017 eventually revoked the entire extraordinary events ordinance, part and parcel, because when we were actually, when city council was able to kind of dive into it, CNPD said it wasn't needed. Chief Putney said this was not something that kept the community safer, and they had other tools to deal with. On top of that, the city attorney believed that there were constitutional concerns, and again, the city council was not able to kind of deal with that until somebody was arrested for that, and those concerns came out of it. Now, on the flip side of that, when I was brought onto city council during last term, we did go through the noise ordinance, and we didn't really have a process to be able to kind of scrub those things, to deal with the concerns that you had. But we created a process, and we brought stakeholders to the table, and we determined that there was a pretty distinct and objective, continued to allow CNPD certain levels of subjectivity, to apply the statute either civilly or criminally, and we were able to kind of go through that. We created that process that didn't actually, we didn't have. But I would go, and again, to the next step. In 2020, after we went through the whole Save Charlotte process, we actually did create a standing committee that allows us to bring stakeholders together to assess whether the decisions that we as city council and other departmental policies within our organization, to determine if these are things that keep us safer, and we can get citizen feedback on whether this is something that we should do. We can take that advisement. So my suggestion, I was able to touch base with the city manager, the city attorney, and Mr. Eggleston, just briefly, I'm not going to speak for them to what they believe. My suggestion would be to convene that citizens committee, of the Save Charlotte Committee, get them to kind of give us some feedback, to do, to ask some of those questions, to interact with CNPD, the legal, and the other entities that are affected by these civil codes. Do it on a timeline, and give us those recommendations, so we can finally kind of put this thing to bed, so we can have that kind of scrutiny through, again, processes that this council has created to deal with issues just like this. Are we making policy decisions that are actually going to keep our community safer? Or are they kind of, you know, making sure we're not just taking somebody's word for it, and we're able to kind of scrutinize it in the proper way? And that would be my suggestion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I thought we had a schedule or a matrix that showed that there was a very low volume of citations and arrests, which speaks to me that assumes that CNPD is being very reasonable in their restraint and judgment in how they apply these particular circumstances. And it's already been said that they seek voluntary compliance in a majority of cases to achieve those ends. So, you know, so I really don't see the need to be prolonging this any longer, in my view. Just last week, in a community meeting in Greer Heights, we had the captain there, and he was very relieved that, I guess, we reinstituted several of these laws already, and he was looking forward to the ability to be able to reasonably do their job with the passage of these, this next eight. So I don't know that we need any more time to thrash over this. I haven't seen any egregious. I was shocked at the low volume of arrests and citations that were presented to us in those, in that matrix, that, you know, I was surprised that they use that much reasonable judgment and restraint to enforce those laws and depend on voluntary compliance. So with that, I mean, I would make a motion that we would go ahead and approve these.
Second?
Is there a second? We have a second? All right. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a...
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to put these into the Safe Communities Committee, so we can convene this citizens, Safe Charlotte Citizens Committee. I'm sorry, I'm naming it wrong.
I think it's the Community Input Group.
The Community Input Group, to get a recommendation from them about the action in front of us.
About the actual whether or not, tell me what...
The actions in front of us, the recommendations on whether or not to criminalize the aforementioned city codes.
Of all of them, including the airport commission, all of the ones that are here, the eight?
Yes, Mayor Lyles. I've also heard from some...
All right, you've heard the motion. I just wanted to make sure we were doing all of them.
I will mention that. I've spoken to some council members, and there is some concern of pulling things apart, and I think there's a, I've heard a desire to, again, if we're going to look at things, let's look at everything that's on the table.
All right, so there was a motion by Mr. Winston, and the second was by Ms. Johnson.
Can I comment on the substitute motion, Madam?
Ms. Mayor Protem, followed by Mr. Bakari, and Mr. Eggleston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to... I just want to point out to my colleagues that we are restoring measures that were in place before, and that never stopped us from picking out certain issues where there was, you know, that we, I don't mean to say perception, but that there was a question as to whether there was unfair treatment, and that doesn't stop us from addressing that issue. I think to what Mr. Phipps said, that there's not a lot out there that came out of the reporting that makes it very subjective. I know for a fact there's an issue right now going on in front of the women's health clinics, again, because the protesters who have caused the most trouble are saying that it is no longer legal to criminalize interference with women's reproductive health care facilities, which is just not true. It's, the city attorney and I have had a conversation about that today. So I do feel there's a sense of urgency in getting some of these things back on the books, being clear about it, and I don't, again, I don't, I'm not going to support the substitute motion, but I don't, that's not to imply at all that there aren't issues that we could absolutely talk about in the future, but this is just restoring what was on the books to begin with. They were taken off, not by our doing at all, it was the state that did it. So, you know, we could put it back and then have those conversations.
All right, Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, I was basically going to say some of the same points, which is, this just restores the status quo of before, which allows enforcement of the laws of the land, of our internal policies. I don't think what Mr. Winston is saying is an either-or from this. If there's will on this council to explore those policies, to explore those laws more holistically, I think that is a separate topic of which, if that gets legs, that can go in parallel. But right now, this is a totally separate thing that should just be brought forth. It doesn't, it doesn't, if there's no, if there's no will to do that in other times, there shouldn't be a will to try to hold up just restoring the tools that are at the disposal of enforcing the laws and policies of only...
Mr. Eggleston?
If it's the will of the council, I'm certainly happy to take this in the Safe Communities Committee. I would ask that, and I guess I could control this to some degree, I would like us to move quickly on it if that's the direction this goes, because I've also spoken with CMTED officers who said we've created some confusion, we have taken some tools out of the toolbox. As has Ben said, these are things that were not being used aggressively to criminalize behaviors, but were at least gave options when things got out of control. And frankly, I'll take a little issue with the idea that anything that doesn't cause a threat to public safety is not a problem, and I guess no one actually made that comment, so I'm not going to accuse anybody of making it. But there is something to be said for quality of life. I heard from a senior resident in my district just last week that there had been some confusion around the enforceability of the noise ordinance, and they had neighbors throwing a huge party that went in all hours of the night, kept them awake the entirety of the night, and they were scared to go over and say anything to the neighbors, or talk to the neighbors about it for fear of retribution or retaliation. So that might not have been a public safety issue, but it's certainly a quality of life issue, and it's certainly something that, the type of thing that our police officers should be equipped to deal with and have all the tools they need at their disposal. I did speak to Mr. Winston earlier. I did say I would support his effort to put this in the Safe Communities Committee, so I will vote for the substitute motion, but if it fails, I'll also vote to support what's in front of us on the agenda with the original motion. But I don't think, to the point that I believe Ms. Isolde and Mr. Bakari made, I think even if we put these back into effect tonight, I'm still open-minded to if there are certain ones that folks want to unpack and possibly refine or improve, I think that option is still on the table for us, so, thank you.
We have everyone that's spoken.
Oh, I didn't speak to the motion.
That's, I'm sorry. Mr. Graham has...
Madam Mayor, my hand is up.
Mr. Driggs, Mr. Graham first, followed by Mr. Driggs. I know, but you have spoken, and so we'll come back around. But Mr. Graham, and then Mr. Driggs, and then we'll come back around. But Mr. Graham, and then Mr. Driggs, and then we'll come back around.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. I, I, I agree with Greg and, and the Mayor Protem. And I'm, I'm just not sure if it goes to committee, what we'll be doing once it gets there. And I think the legal staff has already taken several deep dives of, of looking at it. It's, it's, it's restoring what's currently already been on the books before. Councilmember Eggleston and I was at a meeting last week with CNPD and community leaders, and they all spoke about the need of getting these tools back in their tool chest quickly for a number of reasons. And I think Councilmember Johnson mentioned earlier about big cities, small towns. This, big cities have these tools in their tool chest. It doesn't mean that they're going to use it, but it, but it means that, that we have to look at what we do very broadly versus very narrowly in terms of these tools. And so I think CNPD on a number of occasions have exercised restraint, even going back to Tent City. No one even talked about even using these, these tools that were available to us. Not even a mention of them. But we also do have Fortune 500 companies that have board meetings, Occupy Wall Street, and political conventions. And so I, I would rather have these tools and, and not use them or have the discretion of how they're being used, if, if at all, than need them and not have them at all. So I would vote against the substitute motion and vote to restore them as quickly as possible.
Sorry, Mr. Driggs, followed by Ms. Johnson, and then Mr. Winston, and then we'll call for the vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the substitute motion is a solution in search of a problem. The CNPD has exercised restraint. There is no basis for us suggesting by this substitute motion that they can't be trusted to use that discretion wisely. And I believe that in, in view of the rise of disorder and crime, we need to back our officers up. These guys have a difficult job, and we need to get behind them. And there is no history to suggest that entrusting them with that authority leads to any kind of abuse. So, and I mean in terms of data, not an isolated episode by a council member, but the, the, the numbers do not suggest that they have abused this, and I don't think they deserve to have us question their judgment. We should get with them. I'm going to oppose this.
Ms. Johnson?
Just for the record, I, I do support CNPD. I just think this is an opportunity we're looking for process. For example, Chief, the, the scenario that you talked about, the nor, the noise violation, right? If you went out there, first of all, you said you went out there, you, someone went out there multiple times. So that's a criteria, multiple times they had gone out. If they refused the order, there's, there's, there's some information there that does not make this potentially subjective, you know? And what, what we're really trying, what I'm thinking of is if there would, and, and not saying that, that, you know, that all officers are going to do this, but if there is a, a chance that there's an overzealous officer that would charge someone that might not otherwise be charged in another area, well, even if the, the statistics are low, you know, a criminal record and a court charge, and the attorneys, and, and the criminal record affects each person seriously. So if we have an opportunity to improve the process, I think that we should take advantage of it. If, in that case, Chief, when you went out there for the noise ordinance, if that resident didn't comply, isn't non-compliance to an officer, isn't that a criminal charge right there? Or is it? I don't know.
No, not in that circumstance, no.
Okay, so.
So if you're at someone's house, and you ask, please turn the music down, and they say no, that's not a state charge.
Is it a, so there's no charge for disobeying an officer?
In that circumstance, that's correct. If you're in a vehicle, or out in the street, or a different circumstance, there is. But you gave the example, if it's a noise ordinance, and you go to someone's house because we get a neighborhood complaint, and the person chooses not to turn the music down, that is not resist, obstruct, or delay.
So the only criminal charge would be the noise ordinance?
That's correct.
Or the only threat to, to make them comply would be the noise, the noise ordinance?
We don't threaten anybody.
Not threat, but the only consequence?
The only legal remedy we would have is a city ordinance.
And the only city ordinance that would be applicable at 3:00 in the morning for noise, and if you've gone out there multiple times, would be noise?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Again, just some points of clarification. One, we did restore the criminal enforcement of the noise ordinance last week. So if there is some ambiguity that CNPD or the community has, I think that's an internal issue within staff that we should fix and be very clear about. This council has been very clear about those things. Two, the, the recommendation was very clear of not to just send it into committee to, to, to figure out what to do, you know, to look for a, a solution to, a, a problem for a solution, as, as one of my colleagues said. But it was to put it, to give it to the citizens committee, the standing committee, that this council has created to assess future policy decisions that we should make so that we can get the type of stakeholder feedback that, that we all put somebody on there for so that we are not relying on, on individual anecdotes of, of individual council members meeting with some members of CNPD and some people in the community. So we have a defined process, which this, this, this council carefully crafted. I think we should utilize this process when, when we are dealing with these things. And then, on the other hand, let's be very clear. This is not about, about putting CNPD, saying CNPD is right or wrong, or, or, or being on, on their side or not. This is the greater concern of government. And, and whether we can move people and take away their freedom, and when we do have that awesome responsibility, how and why are we going to wield it? Are we going to wield it because we feel like we should be able to move people? Or are we determining that there are certain deliverable circumstances that come from moving that person? That is a, that is a very awesome responsibility to have, and we should consider it. Two other points that I, I will make. If something is not, if there's not a law saying that something is illegal, that means it's not illegal, which is why we are taking a look at these codes, because there are not laws against these things. The legislature has not said that these things are illegal. So again, we have the responsibility to create circumstances that, that rise to criminality or not. And I think, again, we should go through the process that we have created to under, for us to understand and, and get feedback from the community at large to determine whether we take people's rights away. And the last point I make, you know, just to the points of, I've, I've heard some of my colleagues say, no, these are not things that we want. Some, I heard Mr. Graham and, and Mr. Driggs talk about that we've had certain tools, and we just want them to have them. No, there are certain tools that if we have them, and even if they only get enforced four years after they are implemented, they can be very wrong, and they cannot be the, necessarily the right solution for us to have. And that is not something that we should just do, do by default, because that can have incredible impacts on people's lives. Again, we should utilize the process that this, this committee, this council has created to, to, to come to an objective decision. Thank you.
Can we go ahead and take the vote, Madam Mayor, for questions?
Sorry, we have, I'm going to call the question. Substitute motion is to send these to the committee that was named by the city manager of citizens for a referral. I will say this, I think that we ought to move forward on this. I also would say that this isn't an either/or situation. It can be a both-and. We can adopt these and send them to the committee, through the Community Safety Committee, and have them report back to us because I think that people can read through and look at this and get the feedback. Just like I said on the prior vote, I always would believe that we ought to have the citizen engagement and input. And we can do this through that, that group. But we could also put it on the agenda and have people come down on the 11. So I'm going to just say that I think that it shouldn't be one or the other. I think we can do both. But this is a motion that's on the table. The substitute motion is to send to the committee properly named by the city manager, because I've already forgotten it. So we'll start with the roll call vote. Mayor Protem?
No, for the substitute motion.
All right. Mr. Bakari? He's no longer with us? I'm sorry. That's right.
If Mr. Bakari, or anybody else, is participating virtually, and they're not here, their vote is not recorded. It's different when we're under.
So they're not recorded, so neither is Ms. Hirsch, nor Mr. Bakari. So Mr. Driggs?
No.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
No.
Mr. Newton?
No.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
All right, one, two, three, four yeses. One, two, three noes. Did I get that right? Did I have that right? Five noes, three yeses. So, did I do that correct, Madam Clerk?
I mean, you have to get the six to pass anyway, right?
No.
That's correct.
That's correct. You have to get six to pass anything, so that motion fails. The next motion goes to approve these. Again, if the council does this, we can still have the referral to the committee as named for the feedback and come back and amend as necessary.
Is it possible to adjust the motion? Is it possible to amend the original motion to say what you said?
No, because the substitute motion, I'm, Mr. Baker, the substitute motion was made. We have the original motion, which was to adopt the recommendations that are before us. So we have to vote on the subs, the original motion now.
But the original.
Unless the maker of the motion is willing to accept an amendment, the motion that's in front of you has been seconded.
Mr. Phipps made the motion. Are you accepting amendments to your motion?
No.
Okay.
What can I ask for a point order on the substitute motion?
It's done, we voted on it.
Well, no, I have a question. Can you remind us why the members that left are not, not considered a yes?
They're virtual.
Yeah, in, in the virtual, the virtual meetings, the statute that we have, if you're participating virtually, for your vote to be recorded, you have to be online so that the public can hear it. So you don't have the automatic yes vote that you normally would have when everyone's in the room.
There's a law for that.
And that's just for, that's just for the virtual meetings.
All right, so there were, can I finish getting clarification? Thank you. So if they were here and they left the room, they would, if they left the meeting, they're considered a yes?
If they were there physically, yes. If they're participating remotely, then no. They have to be on camera so you can, you can record that.
Because, yeah, it, I'm, okay, Ms. Johnson? Okay, all right. So Mayor Protem, on the original motion?
What, what is the original?
The original motion is to adopt the staff's recommendation as included in the book. Yes. All right. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham? Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington? Mr. Winston?
Absolutely not.
So there are six yeses, and the motion passes. We'll also do a referral to the Public Safety, Community Safety Committee for these to be reviewed by the Citizen Input Committee as well. So we'll write that up, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, will you help me write that up tomorrow? And we'll get it to Mr. Eggleston. All right, that is the end of the strategy session meeting. Thank you very much, Deputy Chief Basher. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go. Thank you, everyone.